I would like to call tonight's meeting of the City of Tacoma Park City Council to order. With the clerk, please call the row.
Um, point of order, has anyone attempted to contact?
Councilmember Fulcher has a personal emergency she's addressing.
Alright, thank you.
Mayor Circey.
Here.
Councilmember Dubala.
Present.
Councilmember Gibson.
Here.
Councilmember Siemens.
Present.
Councilmembers, Hanzak.
Present.
Councilmember Small.
Chilling.
Alright, good evening, everyone. We have a little mood lighting tonight in the auditorium. We had a few lights to go out tonight, so I hope that everyone is able to see as well. Now, I just realized I don't have my mask on. So, the agenda for tonight, just want to walk folks quickly through. We have a, there's no for the record items. We are having public comments on voting items. Tonight's voting items are: The first reading ordinance adopting the 2024 tax rates. The council vote to convene is a stormwater management board. The first reading ordinance adopting the FY 2024 stormwater management budget. And the first reading ordinance adopting the FY 2024 budget. And after our voting session, we will have presentations from our grants review committee recommendations. And we will have two work sessions. The first is the Maple Avenue Connectivity Project Contract Award Recommendation and Draft Ordinance. And the second is the Resolution Regarding Policy Options Concerning the Long-Term Fiscal Health of the City and Exploration of Additional Revenue Sources. Really quickly, so I've just gone through the agenda for today. On Wednesday, May the 17th, we will have a voting session. The second reading ordinance adopting the FY 2024 tax rates. The council will vote to convene is a stormwater management board. We will then have the second reading ordinance adopting the FY 2024 stormwater management budget. The second reading ordinance adopting the FY 2024 budget. The single reading ordinance adopting, ordinance authorizing the city manager to sign a contract for the Maple Avenue Connectivity Project. We will also have a single reading ordinance approving grant awards. Lastly, we'll have work sessions, one on the 2023 legislative wrap-up and discussion of the 2024 legislative priorities. And the second is procurement of rental housing and licensing software. On May the 24th, we will have the National Gun Violence Awareness Day proclamation. National Gun Violence Day is on June the 2nd. We will have a presentation from Montgomery County Planning on the Minor-Master Plan. We will have a voting session on the second reading ordinance awarding a contract for rental housing licensing software, as well as a work session on the Minor-Master Plan, which will be a council discussion. On Monday, May the 29th, is Memorial Day. City offices and facilities will be closed Sunday and Monday for the Memorial Day holiday. And Wednesday, May the 31st, the council will not meet. Okay, and so with that, we do not have any changes to the agenda for tonight. Give me one second, let me just make sure we don't, we do not. And I'm going to move on to the public comments on voting items. Do we have any public comments on voting items for tonight? And again, the voting session includes the first reading ordinance adopting the FY 2024 tax rates. And the first reading ordinance adopting the FY 2024 stormwater management budget. And the first reading ordinance adopting the FY 2024 budget. Oh, let me, let me turn you on.
Give me one second, I apologize for that. Alright.
Good evening, everybody. As you know, I'm Tom Gaglardo, I'm your neighbor. You've been, I want to make some specific points tonight. Number one, you've begun facing our community's fiscal situation. I observed how diligently each of you worked, and as I said previously, I do not question your motives. Each of you deserves credit for starting the long and arduous task of restoring the city's fiscal health. Keep on, point number two, keep on. As you are aware, there is much more to do. And results not good intentions are the true measure of success. Three, together, let us, who's us? Elected officials, people who are willing to devote their time and energy to address you, everybody who lives in Tacoma Park. Let us face facts, even those that are discomforting or inconvenient. Four, here's the first fact for us to face. The proposed budget called for more expenditures than available general fund revenue. The soon-to-be-adopted budget didn't change that by much. It changed, but it wasn't by much. You cut some expenditures while adding others, and essentially split the difference between the staff-proposed tax rate and the current rate. So both assessments and the tax bills, excuse me. So both assessments and the tax rate have increased, and tax bills will be higher than last year. Now, here's what I really want to know. How is that going to be presented in the city newsletter? That's an important question. We have not talked about the role of the city newsletter, and whether it's conveying facts as people need to know them. Five, in the past, the deficit was covered by using ARPA funds and by tapping reserves, still below the 17%, called for by a council resolution. And we on both sides of the dais, all of you and all of us out here, although it's just me and Arthur tonight, know that can't continue. Six, spending decisions dictate budget. Budget dictates tax rate, and tax rate multiplied by assessed values sets the tax bill. That is what we actually pay. Seven, let's all face the fact that staff-proposed spending must be critically and thoroughly vetted and challenged, even if the tax rate is low. And no matter how much is in reserve, unjustifiable and unwise spending is just that. Unjustifiable and unwise. Eight, please prioritize how money is spent over seeking new sources of revenue. Nine, whoever, when you hire a new manager, or if you hire Mr. Eubanks, please assure that whoever that may be is willing to speak truth to power. That's more important than anything on a resume or the initials after a person's name. Start the budget earlier, and start it by instructing the manager to propose alternative budgets. For example, constant yield and maintenance of effort. I have one last thing to say. Number 10, James Baldwin. James Baldwin instructed us, quote, "Not everything that is faced can be changed, but nothing can be changed until it is faced." By discomforting those in power and those of us who put and kept them there, James Baldwin's dissenting voice compelled us to be a better, more equitable country. We hope our dissenting voices will be part of what will make Tacoma Park a better community.
Thank you. Do we have any other public comments on voting items? Do we have anyone remote?
We do have one public comment, one general public comment from Paul Hubner, and my apologies to the city TV folks because I forgot to let them know. So it may take just a moment to get Mr. Hubner in.
No worries.
Hi there, am I in, Jesse?
You're in.
Okay, great. Shall I start, Mayor?
Yes.
Good evening, Paul Hubner Ward 3. First of all, I must convey my gratitude for the diligence and the hard work that this council has contributed to our community over the course of the last few months. I watched the budget deliberations in their entirety, including last week. It went to 11 minutes past 1:00 a.m. You are absolutely working very hard. I want you to work smart. Stop working off the broken model of the Stuart Ludlow administration that places budget wish lists ahead of the residents' needs and tax burdens. This budget season, you consider a budget proposal to increase all things staff. You have seemingly arrived at a 7.15% average property tax increase. It will certainly be much more for many. I will pay in excess of $4,000 in local city taxes alone. I make payments on a new car for four grand a year. Instead, you are proposing to put my tax payments towards some $500,000 per year on police vehicles. City police have more cars than they have sworn officers. In addition to my city taxes, I'll pay twice that amount in county taxes, some of which will be spent to support this city government, mostly to provide only slightly better services, if at all. Not only are the residents at Tacoma Park paying the highest municipal tax in the county and the state, we can see waste throughout the city government. We have seen the diversion of over $6 million of ARPA funds from the mouths of children to overdue expensive capital projects. The library and the police station renovation are two recent examples of badly managed capital projects. I would ask any of you to point to any capital project this city has done, on time or on budget. We recently took out another bond on this community center, as yet not paid off. You ought to be congratulated for your hard work, but we still miss the mark of a reasonable level of city taxes and services. We hope you will learn to chart a new course going forward. Start the budget process much earlier, right after your summer recess. Require this new city manager or acting city manager to produce budget proposals at constant yield, the current rate, and at the wish list rate. Demand the replenishment of reserves to the 17% of revenue, or alter the resolution. Require the quarterly financial reports you have been promised, but it is in resolution. Demand that expenditures start from projected revenue, not some mythical list. Begin a serious look at the runaway vehicle and equipment purchases, and construct a new policy that aligns with resident needs. Install and use the interactive budget planning tool, and make it accessible to residents. Finally, start a new public comments process, where the residents will get contemporaneous answers. These three-minute presentations are far less effective than the recent interactive budget sessions that many of you had with residents. I thank you for your time and attention.
Thank you, Mr. Hubner. Do we have any other general comments? Okay, alright. So now, we're going to move on, apologize, folks, I have lots of paper here, to council comments. Councilmember Gibson.
I just want to say thanks to the two folks that gave presentations, Tom and Paul. You guys have been active and made very poignant presentations, very constructive presentations in the past, and you continue to do so. I thank you for carrying the torch.
Councilmember Small.
Oh my goodness. Because we didn't have no snacks last week, I bought my own snacks. Can you go?
Yes, I'd be happy to.
Councilmember Small is eating right now, so we're going to move on to Councilmember Dubala.
And then we can double back, yes. So just a couple, just a couple of things, thanks to everyone who commented, not just the people sitting in the room right now, but all the people who participated in the budget process throughout the last, throughout the last couple of months. Couple of things, so last night, we had a, the Long Beach Lego Community Association had their monthly meeting, we talked about the budget, we talked about the Minor-Master Plan, and a couple of other things. So thanks for letting me share some of the city news with you. Last Thursday, we had a sidewalk meeting for Belford Place. And it was not super well-attended, but there wasn't anybody who had an issue with the plan, which was good, so we'll be moving to the next step, which is a vote of the neighborhood on the final design. So you should be getting a letter in the mail sometime soon from the city asking you to vote on whether to approve that last step. I think the intent is to get started in this budget year with the work, if the neighborhood approves it. Two more things, library book sale, somebody else going to be talking about that? Okay, so this Saturday, 10 to 2, there'll be a book sale. Friends of the library will be raising money for programs for the library, enough said. And last but not least, the National League of Cities is having a capstone conference for projects that were in this second round. I understand the city's applied for the third round, but I've been invited because I'm a member of the board, so next week I'll be signing in remote. I won't be sitting here, but I'll be at the meeting. I'll be doing it in Madison and not here. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Dubala. Councilmember Small?
I am ready now.
Okay.
Thank you, Mayor, apologies. And sometimes it's odd when, because these are technically working meetings, and they're also televised, so I apologize. But I did want to say two, well, I guess three things. First of all, I wasn't going to say anything about the public comments other than like thumbs up and whatnot. But I did want to say that technically, I have been in other places where the council does actually talk about whatever the things that are articulated are, and then they can direct staff as to answering those questions more efficiently. So it isn't aberrant. I just wanted to say that out loud. Secondly, I did want to say a couple of things about recent events. This last weekend, we had the phenomenal Crossroads Day, and it was really amazing and sincere. And I cannot express my gratitude enough to Kaylee and the Crossroads staff for actually putting together a genuine event. I appreciate the Zumba people who came from all over. I was amazed to see Shanna in the front doing Zumba like a champ, and that, I thought that was really cool. Also, I did want to say that it was a little bit of a scheduling snafu to have that event at the same time, or cross over the Tacoma Foundation event at the VFW. And I would, I would just challenge people who are in those kinds of spaces to try to communicate with each other about those kinds of things. I would argue that probably some of the people who went to that one would have probably had a good time at the Crossroads thing. The second thing I wanted to talk about is this pen. This is the pen that the governor used to sign the restrictive covenant legislation that I went to go testify on. And it's a, it's a long and odd story, but I didn't necessarily know until late. And then while I was talking to our wonderful lobbyist, and my phone died. So then, I jumped in the car to try to get to Annapolis, and then there was a traffic jam on the Beltway. So when I got there, I happened to randomly get a chance to park in the first immediate lot that never has any spaces in it. And then I walked across the street, and right when I went past the security, they called the bill. So then I walked upstairs, and I hopped over the velvet rope to be with the MML people who are exceedingly good at their jobs. Then we walked around, and the governor was signing the bill. It's going to take a little bit longer, I apologize. And so, while we were walking up, I said, "Hey, Governor, I would really like to have that actual pen, because I want to send it to my mom." And so the governor turned around and looked at me, and he said,[1130.62][1131.12]"I want you to send this pen to your mother, and I thank you." And then he shook my hand, and then I told him something, I don't remember. And then he dap me up instead of shaking my hand, which is cool for brother-to-brother-type common negro courtesy thing. But then, when I left, ironically enough, Senator Joanne Benson from Prince George's County was sitting on the chairs outside. And she is a Titan over there, and candidly could have probably moved from the area at any time, and still got elected someplace, but didn't. And she's one of the reasons why I stayed there as long as I did. And so, it was wild to come out and then be able to say, you know, "Holy crap, one of the reasons why I kept doing these kinds of things was because of you, and then here you are." So I got a chance to kiss her hand, and then I went down the stairs, and the whole thing took 15 minutes. And so, it was weird. But I did want to say that in case anybody's watching, or you have kids or anything that are out there that you want to play something back for, like, trying is awesome. You don't ever know when you're going to get a chance to turn one of your windmills into a dragon that you get to slay. And to put a common law vestige of the crown away is cool. And so I just wanted to thank you guys, particularly the previous council, for flagging the bill as an issue. Ironically enough, it worked out the way that it did, and my mom's getting a cool Mother's Day present, so thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Small, for all of your hard work pushing that forward. Councilmember Siemens.
Thank you, Mayor. And I first want to thank Councilmember Small for telling me about the pen and the effort you went in to get that pen. It's especially nice to me because you sent me a picture of the pen, and I wasn't sure what it meant. It was nice to hear the story behind the photo.
With Frederick, with Frederick Douglass doll. It was like a thing, I should have explained it, I'm sorry.
That's okay. Anyways, I just wanted to thank the city manager and the police chief for having a public safety meeting at the Franklin Apartments yesterday. It went very well. Special commendation to Lieutenant Williams for conducting the meeting. It was well-attended, and I think people really appreciated it. It gave them an opportunity to talk about public safety in and around the building where they live, but also gave them an opportunity to talk about some of the things that aren't city business, that are more of the management, the building management business. And it gave them an opportunity to air those concerns, and so I've promised to help them pass that along to their management. And I also just wanted to take a minute and thank the previous Montgomery County First Lady, Catherine Leggett, for the invitation to the Community Reach Gala this last weekend. It was a great affair, and Community Reach raised a lot of money. I think it was somewhere around $200,000 from their gala. It was a fun event. I was able to purchase a nice hat at the event, and I thank her for the invitation. And that's all, thank you.
Councilmember Hanzak.
Thank you. I can't top what Councilmember Small just shared, but just a few little points. One is regarding budgets and taxes. I just wanted to say a huge thank you to every resident in my ward that reached out. It wasn't like some of the other wards. We, I didn't get the numbers up in 40 and 50 people, but I did have some very ardent residents who took the time to write to me and reach out to me, and it really makes a difference. So I just want to keep that energy coming. Anybody who's thought about it but hasn't followed through, next time, there's still time for next time. And there's always tomorrow. So, and I particularly want to thank staff and fellow council members, because I too observed how hard everybody was working, and I, and I watched how this staff had worked very hard on making the budget that they felt was the right budget for our city before it got to our desks. I know that may not always be felt and seen, but I'm feeling it now, even in ways that I haven't felt previously. And I, and I think we should be grateful for the way that staff very conscientiously applied themselves to make quite substantial reductions in business-as-usual practices before that budget even came to our desks. And then while I was talking to our wonderful lobbyist, and my phone died. So, then I jumped in the car to try to get to Annapolis, and then there was a traffic jam on the Beltway. So, when I got there, I happened to randomly get a chance to park in the first immediate lot that never has any spaces in it. And then I walked across the street, and right when I went past the security, they called the bill. So, then I walked upstairs, and I hopped over the velvet rope to be with the MML people who are exceedingly good at their jobs. Then we walked around, and the governor was signing the bill. It's gonna take a little bit longer, I apologize. And so, while we were walking up, I said, "Hey, Governor, I would really like to have that actual pen, because I want to send it to my mom." And so, the governor turned around and looked at me, and he said, "I want you to send this pen to your mother, and I thank you." And then he shook my hand, and then I told him something, I don't remember. And then he dap me up instead of shaking my hand, which is cool for a brother-to-brother type common Negro courtesy thing. But then, when I left, ironically enough, Senator Joanne Benson from Prince George's County was sitting on the chairs outside. And she is a Titan over there, and candidly could have probably moved from the area at any time, and still got elected someplace, but didn't. And she's one of the reasons why I stayed there as long as I did. And so, it was wild to come out and then be able to say, you know, "Holy crap, one of the reasons why I kept doing these kinds of things was because of you, and then here you are." So, I got a chance to kiss her hand, and then I went down the stairs, and the whole thing took fifteen minutes. And so, it was weird. But I did want to say that in case anybody's watching, or you have kids or anything that are out there that you want to play something back for, like, trying is awesome. You don't ever know when you're going to get a chance to turn one of your windmills into a dragon that you get to slay. And to put a common law vestige of the crown away is cool. And so, I just wanted to thank you guys, particularly the previous council, for flagging the bill as an issue. Ironically enough, it worked out the way that it did, and my mom's getting a cool Mother's Day present, so thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Small, for all of your hard work pushing that forward. Councilmember Siemens?
Thank you, Mayor. And I first want to thank Councilmember Small for telling me about the pen and the effort you went in to get that pen. It's especially nice to me, because you sent me a picture of the pen, and I wasn't sure what it meant. So, it was nice to hear the story behind the photo.
With Frederick Douglass doll. It was like a thing. I should have explained it, I'm sorry.
Yeah, that's okay. Anyways, I just wanted to thank the city manager and the police chief for having a public safety meeting at the Franklin Apartments yesterday. It went very well. A special commendation to Lieutenant Williams for conducting the meeting. It was well attended, and I think people really appreciated it. It gave them an opportunity to talk about public safety in and around the building where they live, but also gave them an opportunity to talk about some of the things that aren't city business, that are more of the management, the building management business. And it gave them an opportunity to air those concerns, and so, I've promised to help them pass that along to their management. And I also just wanted to take a minute and thank the previous Montgomery County First Lady Catherine Leggett for the invitation to the Community Reach Gala this last weekend. It was a great affair, and Community Reach raised a lot of money. I think it was somewhere around $200,000 from their gala. It was a fun event. I was able to purchase a nice hat at the event, and I thanked her for the invitation. And that's all, thank you.
Councilmember Honzac?
Thank you. I can't top what Councilmember Small just shared, but just a few little points. One is regarding budgets and taxes. I just wanted to say a huge thank you to every resident in my ward that reached out. It wasn't like some of the other wards. I didn't get the numbers up in forty and fifty people, but I did have some very ardent residents who took the time to write to me and reach out to me, and it really makes a difference. So, I just want to keep that energy coming. Anybody who's thought about it but hasn't followed through, next time, there's still time for next time, and there's always tomorrow. So, and I particularly want to thank staff and fellow council members, because I too observed how hard everybody was working, and I watched how this staff had worked very hard on making the budget that they felt was the right budget for our city before it got to our desks. I know that may not always be felt and seen, but I'm feeling it now, even in ways that I haven't felt previously. And I think we should be grateful for the way that staff very conscientiously applied themselves to make quite substantial reductions in business-as-usual practices before that budget even came to our desks. And then I want to get to another point, which is that the pinch is very real, especially in certain parts of our city, for those who have less money or are, let's call them more middle-class than upper. And I think that right now, that may not be the same experience across the whole city. And so, when people are saying, "Oh, my goodness, the city has already cut back on certain things that we're used to having," it can be a little painful, and people are wanting to say, "Hey, who did that? Is it the council? Is it the city?" And I just want to reassure folks that we're all working together to address the fiscal health of our city, and it's gonna take a lot of seeing ourselves as a whole, rather than seeing somebody else doing the thing that hurts. And I just want to lay that out there. And then, last night, I attended the MC dot meeting on biking. There's a bike plan that's being underway right now. It's just in the design phase. And I just want to share that with people. If you're interested in learning more, please reach out to me or the city. And they've got three different versions of the plan that were on display last night at the Long Branch Community Center. It comes right up to the northern edge of the city. I loved going to the Cinco de Mayo Celebration last Friday, held by Long Branch. Again, just up past the northern tip of the city. It was a really fantastic event with live music, and really showed you what that piece of our neighborhood, including Ward Five, feels like when you mix with a lot of different cultures. I loved it, did a lot of dancing. And we have a couple of celebrations coming up in our neighborhood. I'm sorry, can I have just ten more? We have our Ward Five Block Party that has been on hold during the entire pandemic. The one that has happened every year for years is gonna be happening again on Memorial Day, and I'm super excited and grateful to the residents who are organizing that. And then about a week later, we've got what I hope will be a ward-wide celebration, bringing the southern part of our ward up together with the northern part in the center at Totally Fraser Park, where there have been those gunshots. And I hope we can kind of take back the ward and the park that is a city park, and really celebrate around that, and share some good times together, and also connect folks more with the city. And then finally, just a happy Mother's Day to all the mothers and grandmothers and dads, but especially those moms right now who made it through the pandemic to the other side. It has not been easy. It's not over, and just, I hope you have a joyous day.
Wonderful. Thank you so much, Councilmember Honzac. So, first I want to start with, again, my appreciation for all of the residents that have shared thoughts, concerns regarding the budget and the long-term fiscal health of the city. I think it's important for everyone to keep in mind, and I know Director Chung was here. She would say, "Mayor, stop talking about this like this is your household budget." But when you have to pivot how you're spending money in your household, you're not able to completely replenish everything over the course of a single month or a series of months. It's things that you have to do and behaviors that you have to change over time that will ultimately lead to you being able to have more resources available, if you can. And I think that that's where we are as a city. Being able to pivot is not gonna happen overnight, but we are committed to taking the necessary steps to be able to manage ourselves out of this situation over time. So, I ask for residents to bear with us, join us, engage with us as we are working to try to take the necessary steps to get ourselves into a better fiscal position. That said, I do feel very appreciative to our city staff as well, because the level of transparency that we have shown with this budget process is so refreshing in a time when we are being tapped. The county council is talking about tax increases too, and I don't know if you can go online and find all of their books to understand where the money has been and where we're proposing that the money go. Your responsiveness to all of the questions that we and residents have asked, and the quick turnaround in which you have been able to do that is just amazing. It's just been such an amazing, hard, fast, but the level of staff commitment with getting people the answers that they need has been so, so, so refreshing. And I'm so grateful for every single staff person in our city, for all of the hard work that you do every day, but particularly all of the time that you all spent with preparing this budget, educating all of us on the matters of the budget, being open to recommendations. It's been a really, I do feel like this has been a team effort, and I'm grateful for all of this time that you all have put in. On recap of the weekend, there was a lot happening this weekend. Councilmember Small mentioned the Crossroads Music Festival. And if you have not gone to a Crossroads Music Festival event, you have to go. The bands are amazing. The food is awesome. So, I was at that. The Children's Business Fair, that happened on Saturday. Amazing, amazing young entrepreneurs who were selling their items. I saw things from youth who designed T-shirts. I bought aloe plants from a youth. There were popcorn. There was 3D toys. There were cookies. There were a lot of cookies. But what was the most fun was to hear the passion in the youth's expression as they were telling you about the wonderful things that they made and that they were selling. So, thank you so much for the Tacoma Park Children's Business Fair. It was a really great event on Saturday. Also, was at the VFW for the Tacoma Foundation Beer Fest. That happened. And so, that was a wonderful event as well. I realize now it's the masks that's preventing me from being able to speak clearly. But really grateful for those organizers. And then lastly, on Sunday, I was invited to speak at the Tacoma Seventh Day Adventist Church of the community, at their community center, where they were honoring women. There was a tea in recognition of upcoming Mother's Day. And I had an opportunity to sit at the children's table as they were enjoying tea. So, it was such a really fun experience, and so, I'm really thankful to the pastor and the women there for welcoming me with open arms, and I appreciate that opportunity. So, with that, I am going to turn things over to our acting deputy city man, we gotta shorten your name, Mr. Eubanks, for city manager comments.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, council. Good evening, members of the public and city staff. I have quite a few updates, so bear with me. The Finance Department has completed its computations related to the amount of property tax refunds due to eligible residents under the city's program to assist recipients of the state's homeowners' property tax credit and the renters' property tax credit. For the levy year 2022, which is fiscal year '23, ninety-eight Tacoma Park homeowners are receiving checks that total about $120,000, and thirteen renters are receiving checks totaling about $2,000. The numbers of homeowner recipients are slightly lower, 105, but the number and amount received for the renters are higher than last year. The final information that's necessary to process all of this was received Friday on May 5th, and we expect checks to go out by the end of this week. Also, as an effort to continue budget transparency, we're going to include as an update each week things that we're working on that are related to the budget. Our goal is to help the community understand the city's finances and timelines. For instance, in order to be ready for tonight, our five-person finance department prepared the ordinances and fund summaries, then updated our financial software for each of the decisions made by council last Wednesday. The department had four days to complete this work, so it could be posted to the city website yesterday evening. This involves multiple other departments providing updated information, collating that information with the budget items approved by council, and then after inputting it in the software, validating and reconciling total expenditure and total revenue. Meanwhile, the department has also been working, as I said, on the homeowners' property tax credit and renters' property tax credit. Similar to other budget work and financial activities, this requires adequate planning, sufficient preparation, and good coordination. We would like to thank our senior leadership team and their departments for prioritizing this work. Quite a few events from our Housing and Community Development Department. Tonight, May 10th, beginning at 7:00 PM, is the Minor Master Plan Montgomery County Historic Preservation Commission Hearing. This is the public hearing and work session for the evaluation of Hefner Park Community Center at 42 Osuago, Sligo Seventh Day Adventist Church at 77 Carroll Avenue, and Crestview at 7625 Carroll Avenue. The agenda designation form, staff reports, and additional materials are posted on the county planning website. We will include the link in the posted version of the city manager's comments. On May 13th, from 10:00 AM to 4:00 PM on Grant Avenue, is the Tacoma Flea. This is an outdoor market offering a mix of vintage, collectible, antique, salvage, and repurposed goods. It even offers an outdoor dining patio. On May 18th, from 7:30 PM to 9:00 PM in the auditorium of the community center, four local poets will share their original work in a new Tacoma Park Arts Poetry Reading. And finally, on May 19th, again from 7:30 AM to, excuse me, not again, this is in the morning, from 7:30 AM to 9:00 AM, Tacoma Park is hosting two pit stops for Bike to Work. These will be at the New Hampshire and Sligo Creek Parkway and the Old Tacoma at 7035 Carroll Avenue. If these aren't on your route, and you don't want to miss it, you can go to www.biketoworkmetrodc.org to find pit stops on your route. Last week, just as an update to a request from Councilmember Siemens, I just want to make everyone aware that the code enforcement case regarding the residents at the Garden Bids, excuse me, the residents at the Franklin Apartment regarding the Garden Bids has been resolved. Staff confirmed that while code enforcement continues to work with the property and adjoining properties around the rat abatement issues, the Garden Bids are not in violation of any city codes, and the city has not requested that the bids be moved or removed. From the library, the Tacoma Park Library and Community Center redevelopment project was allocated $125,000 in Maryland State Capitol Grants. This is a program from FY24 that required a grant submission and some advocacy from our council, as well as state delegates. These are funds that do not require repayment and will assist in ensuring sufficient contingency funds for the project. Our thanks go out to our representatives at the Maryland State House and Senate, including State Senator William C. Smith Jr., Delegate David Moon, and Delegate Janelle K. Watkins. We especially want to thank Delegate Loric Shakudian, as well as our mayor and city council for their support in this endeavor. And then finally, from our Police Department, National Peace Officers Memorial Week will take place May 15th through the 22nd. Various activities will take place starting on May 9th to recognize all of the men and women who served and have served in law enforcement, and to recognize those who have given their lives to protect our communities. These events include a candlelight vigil, recognizing all officers lost in the line of duty in 2022 on May 13th, and the annual National Peace Officers Memorial Service, which will take place on May 15th at the National Mall. Thank you to all of Tacoma Park officers, current and former, who continue to serve and keep our community safe. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. And next on the agenda, Councilmember Siemens?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to take a moment and thank City Manager Eubanks for resolving the question of the garden boxes at the Franklin Apartments. I appreciate it being resolved in a positive way by your staff, including Director Cowler. It was very fast, and I think the right thing to do. Thank you.
Councilmember Tabala?
Yes, thank you. Is it too soon for the $125,000 to be included in the budget for this coming year? Nice try, huh?
Well, for FY24?
Yes.
What will likely happen, councilmembers, that we will, once the dollars are received, we'll end up doing a budget amendment. And that will go directly to a special revenue fund out of this.
Yes, thank you. I'm very excited about that.
All right. So, now we're gonna move into our voting session. So, want to just make sure that everyone understands what we have going on today. So, there are three votes. One, adopting the tax rate. We will, actually, there's technically four. One, adopting the tax rate. The second is to convene as the Stormwater Board. The third is to vote on the Stormwater Budget. And then the fourth is the first reading ordinance on the FY24 budget. Keep in mind that these are ordinances, and we will be voting twice. So, we're gonna be voting the first vote tonight, and then we will do the second vote next week. So, with that, would someone like to move the first reading ordinance, adopting the FY2024 tax rate?
Some would. I'm sorry, may I make just one comment? There will be some, not changes to anything that we're talking about tonight, but changes as a result of the conversation last Wednesday that will ultimately be included in a budget amendment, the last budget amendment of the year from '23 to '24. It's a result of staff not having the opportunity at that meeting to do some additional due diligence before things were approved. For the two positions that we talked about that night, the Sustainability Manager and Grant Coordinator, there are not enough, because of the reductions to the Sustainability Manager, there are not enough dollars to allow for that position to be at the appropriate step and grade. The issue is that, once we begin FY24, there is, per the budget, an automatic increase of 2% to all wages. The $25,000 reduction doesn't take that into account. And so, if we don't apply via an amendment that additional 2%, that position will be out of whack with the rest of the scale. And so, what we have to do is allocate, that was a relatively small amount of money, to FY24 to make sure that that position is in line with the rest of the salary scale.
So, does that impact our ability to hire for that position in the remainder of 2023? Or is that something we would need to wait until 2024 to do?
It won't affect our ability to hire. We'll just have to be sure that prior to the next budget cycle, actually, it could happen afterwards, because the money would be there to continue to fund the position. But we would just have to make sure that we include it in the amendment, so that the funding is available before we get to the end of the year.
Okay.
And then the same is a similar story for the Grant Coordinator. Those, we assumed when we had the conversation quickly that there was a one-for-one exchange from part-time to full-time. We can't simply double the salary and fringe. The salary is fine. The fringe, when we go from a part-time position to a full-time, there are a few other dollars that we need to account for. And so, those few other dollars, again, to keep that position at the same grade and same step, we need to allocate as a part of the budget amendment. We don't want to do it now, because that would affect the tax rate. But we also expect to have plenty enough of salary savings from FY23, and likely in the beginning FY24, that it won't mean much in terms of the budget. I just wanted to make you all aware of that.
Thank you very much.
Mayor, can I ask a question?
Yes.
Acting Deputy City Manager Eubanks, I have a question about the first one, not necessarily the second one. And is it, is there an issue with the fact that the money exists in this year's budget, but then because the position's not gonna be hired, it won't technically automatically be at that? I just, I sort of understood what you said, but that one in particular didn't necessarily click with me the way the second one did.
The assumption that we're making is that we are, by doubling the, by changing the role from part-time to full-time, we essentially assume that we'll have to create a job description that keeps that position at the we essentially assume that we'll have to create a job description that keeps that position at the same.
Oh, no, no. Are you talking about the sustainability one? Because that's the one I'm confused about.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought you meant.
Yeah, no, the second one made sense to me.
Okay. Yeah, so the issue with the, it's a similar circumstance. So the issue with the Sustainability Manager is that if we, and let me know where in my explanation you need some clarification. The issue is that every other position is going to move up 2% because we approve that as a part of the budget. The Sustainability Manager, the reduction doesn't allow for, doesn't account for that 2% increase. And so in order for us to, in order for us to adequately fund that position, we have to add the 2% increase to this reduction.
So my, okay, so there it is. So is that because the position was, has been delisted? And it was at a previous level? Or is it because of anticipated additional dollars next year, just period?
It's because we brought the salary back down to the FY23 salary, and not the FY23 salary plus 2%.
Okay. So that's it? No, there's no extra stuff? Okay, that's all. Thank you.
All right.
Okay, all right. So let's go back. Would someone like to move the first reading ordinance adopting the FY2024 tax rate?
So moved. I would like to make an amendment to my motion to allow for the incorporation of the additional dollars in the budget as a reduction of the reserve in the future. Like with the understanding we're not doing it now, and we're not trying to affect the tax rate.
Doesn't, you don't need to make any adjustments to your original motion.
All right, solid.
We'll take care of it as a budget amendment. If we make a change now, it would affect all the work that you did last week.
All right, thank you. So moved then.
Okay. So Councilmember Small moved, Councilmember Siemens second. Are there any comments, questions, thoughts?
As a, as a comment, I would just like to say that I appreciated everyone's efforts. I know we didn't, we got to the number that I thought we were going to get to. I, I hope we go lower in the future. But I did want to say that I was really, really heartened by the ability of the council to work together on these issues. And I just wanted to personally shout out Mr. Randy for being a decent dude.
All right. Thank you all so much for all of your hard work on this budget. All right. So I'm going to check with the city clerk. Do we need to do a call on this?
You can do a hand vote, I mean, a yays and aays.
Okay. All right. All those in favor of moving the ordinance adopting the FY2024 tax rates, please say aye.
Aye.
Do we have any oppose? Any abstain? Okay, great. All right. So now we will need to vote to convene as the Stormwater Management Board. Would someone like to move for us to convene as a Stormwater Management Board? Councilmember Dabala moves. Do I have a second? Councilmember Siemens seconds. We are now the Stormwater Management Board. All right. So next up, we have the first reading ordinance adopting the FY2024 Stormwater Management Budget. Would someone like to move the first reading ordinance adopting the FY2024 Stormwater Management Budget?
I would like to move.
Councilmember Gibson moves. Do I have a second? Councilmember Hansak seconds. Do we have any questions or comments regarding the Stormwater Management Budget? Councilmember Gibson?
Yes, I just wanted to point out, as I'm learning myself, our role with the Stormwater Board is different than our role as the council. We have, we have additional responsibilities, additional authorities in the Stormwater Board. We have the, we have the ability to have all rights and powers necessary for the collection and disposal of stormwater. Stormwater is in the city, and we shall have the power to implement stormwater management programs. And so that, whereas our council role is purely legislative, in terms of stormwater, it seems to me that it is legislative and executive. Just a clarification that our role is somewhat different and broader with regard to the Stormwater Board.
All right. All those in favor of moving the first reading ordinance adopting the FY2024 Stormwater Management Budget? Please say aye.
Aye.
Do we have any oppose? Do we have any abstain? All right. All right. And so now, we are no longer the Stormwater Management Board. And we are moving to the last item, the first reading ordinance adopting the FY2024 budget. Would someone like to move the ordinance adopting the FY2024 budget? Councilmember Hansak moves. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Okay. Councilmember Small seconds. Are there any comments?
Yes.
Councilmember Gibson?
Yes. First, I want to acknowledge that, as others have, the hard, hard work undertaken by both the council and staff in putting this, in working on this budget and the budget process. I'm new to it, but I recognize that there was a lot of collaboration work. I, however, will vote no on this budget because I believe it was deeply flawed. The constraints on time and information has meant that the council has no real, has had no real option to seek reductions except at the margins. We did a good job, but it was at the margins. The absence of performance measures or metrics, or an alternative budget scenario are, in my opinion, glaring omissions to an effective collaboration and deliberation that we are to do. I will be hoping that we can do better this coming year.
Counsel, thank you so much, Councilmember Gibson. All right. I would like to say, again, as I said earlier, thank you to our staff for folks who haven't had an opportunity to comb through a lot of the materials that were brought forth. Our budget compared to the FY2023 budget, it's a $3.4 million reduction that staff did. And then on top of that, we've added more on top of those subtractions. So, I mean, I think that we've done a good job of trying to reduce our overall expenditures. But we have a lot more to do. We are still showing a $2 million difference between our expenditures and our revenues in the general fund. It's not alarmist, but it's, our general funds aren't balanced. And I know that that's one of the goals that we've established as a, as a council to really focus on the fiscal sustainability and the fiscal health of our community. But I would argue that it takes a lot more than a single budget. It's going to take a lot more for us to think through and work through, identifying things like alternative sources of revenues, trying to make some hard choices in terms of how we are appropriating our expenditures and really having some hard, face the mirror in terms of what are we willing to give up as a community. I think another big thing that we have to do is really revamp how we as a community and our culture around development, how it can perhaps be beneficial to our community in a way, not just as it relates to revenues, but how it can relate to opening our borders to more residents, more businesses, more opportunity here for our community. So again, we've done a lot of work. Staff has done a lot of work, and a lot of effort, a lot of time. But I think that, and one of the things that we have to do looking forward is really trying to address those other factors that impact us as well. And so I think that this is the right, the right council and the right time to start taking those steps. So I will be supporting this budget, not because it reflects what we, what we are, where we want to be, but it does set the baseline, the foundation of where we want to go and how we're making those moves. So, so that is what I have to say about that. Councilmember Small?
Thank you, Mayor. I apologize for going after you. I know I got to the thing late. So, not, notwithstanding that, it is a discourteous act to the mayor, or to the chairs. I apologize. That being said, I just wanted to say two things. The first thing that I wanted to say is that as an ardent believer in democracy and the conscience of the dispassionate legislator, I fully respect Randy's decision not to vote for the budget, and I hope everybody else does too. After that, I would say that, and I hate to keep throwing out metaphors and everything, but this was as solomonic, dividing the proverbial baby budget as I have ever seen. And I would remind you that I've done four of them. The, the larger philosophy of being able to overfund the budget and then bank that dough in the reserve is a dangerous one, in my opinion. And the thing that I wanted to say about it the most is, I, with the malady, one of the things that I try to do is be very intentional about the things that I do. And so I ask pointed questions, I offer advice, and sometimes those things get betwixt and between. I also like rhetoric so I can say things. But at the end of it, I did want to mention, to all concerned, a conversation that I had before getting in here, and it is this, that to my eye, people not very far from here, who often are maligned, work really hard to get just as much done with less, often with fewer people. And it's, the pace can be a little manic, but at some point, it's not the pace itself. It's just the fact that, you know, there's a lot of things to do, so you can just pick one. And I just want to say to everyone that if you're telling me things about being full bore and all out, but my own personal experiences are sort of in contravention to it, or the manner of dialogue between the council and the staff seems antithetical to the Home Rule Act or anything else. What you may be getting from me is that you're essentially saying that there is a second-class status in this state or between the counties, and that that's just cool. And so to me, it's not cool, like not having performance measures, not having a bunch of the things, and candidly, not being put in the position to be able to really think about a lot of these things by being underserved at the executive level meant that the process was truncated. But I am thankful for the leadership that Mr. Eubanks has shown in this budget. And I would like to officially say on the record again that I think we should offer him the gig. Thank you.
Councilmember Siemens?
Thank you, Mayor. And I would like to echo Councilmember Small's. Councilmember Small's. Thank you to City Manager Eubanks. I think this has been a challenging year, I know, for you and for the council. And I really appreciate the work that you did and that you led the staff in doing. And I would also like to thank the, my colleagues here on the council because many of you are new to the council, and it didn't take but a couple months before you were thrown in the middle of the budget process while you're still trying to figure out where the restroom is. So I, I compliment you all on the work that you did on this and the help that you provided to all of us to bring this together. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. So we're ready to vote. All those in favor of the first reading ordinance adopting the FY2024 budget, please say aye.
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 Do we have an oppose?
Nay.
And any abstain? All right. Thank you so much. All right. So with that, we're going to move on to the next agenda item. That is our presentation from the Grants Review Committee and the Grants Review Recommendations.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, Ira Cowler, Acting Director HCD. I'm joined tonight by Derek Shaw, one of our Grants Review Committee members. And we're really excited tonight to share with you the fiscal year 2024 funding recommendations for the Community Quality of Life Grant from the Grants Review Committee. So just a real quick overview on the Community Quality of Life Grant Program. This is a community grant program that's intended to provide financial support for programs and projects to improve the quality of life for city residents. This program is specifically focused on projects that look towards arts and humanities or towards STEM or STEAM programming. This is a grant program that is eligible for 501(c)(3) nonprofits and 501(c)(6) business associations. And the requirements of these programs are that they serve low- and moderate-income households and that they obviously focus on city Tacoma Park residents as well. This is a grant program that I believe we've run since about 2016. In 2023 and 2024, this has been funded through ARPA funds, $110,000 in both those years. So tonight, we have $110,000 in fiscal year 2024 ARPA funds that will be discussing the proposed awards from the Grants Review Committee. And just real quick, in terms of process, the maximum awards per individual recipient is $10,000, and those funds must be matched by a minimum of one-to-one contributions, either financial or in-kind contributions. So just real quickly, I wanted to talk about grant outreach. You know, it's really important to us and to the committee that we get the word out to potentially eligible organizations who are doing great work for city residents to make sure they're aware of this opportunity. So just real quickly, we do that through staff outreach, through city channels such as the newsletter, the website, and social media. We also promote this through outside news sources and other stakeholder partners, as well as enlist committee members to help make sure that the message gets out there. And just to highlight for this current funding round, we had 15 total applicants, and four of those were new applicants who were not funded in FY23. And then just one more slide here, just to kind of show the fact that we're awarding $110,000, but that funding goes a lot further in terms of programming that we're able to provide for city residents and low-to-moderate income residents. So if you see right here, even though we only require that one-to-one match based on the award recommendations we have for you tonight, the city's $110,000 actually will be leveraging over $370,000 in other funding. So, you know, as you can see, our city funds are about 22% of kind of the total pot of funds that will go towards these great programs. So real quickly, just to touch on the Grants Review Committee before I turn it over to Derek, just to remind everyone, this is a Just to remind everyone, this is a city council-appointed committee. It has nine members who serve staggered two-year terms. The meetings are public. Information on them is posted on the website. And this is just a quick little snapshot from our voting session, I believe, to recommend these earlier this month. So definitely encourage folks to go to the website, check out the meeting minutes, stay involved with the committee as they not just make these decisions, but check in with these programs throughout the year and see how they're doing and provide additional support. And you can see a list of the members there on the left. And I'll now hand it over to one of those members to talk a little bit more about the process and the awards.
Thank you, Ira. Mayor, councilmembers. My name is Derek Shaw. I'm a representative from Ward Five on the Grants Review Committee. I have the honor of being on a committee for my second year now. I was also selected to present at the meeting last year, so thank you for having me. And like Ira said, there is nine of us from across six wards of Tacoma Park. We meet monthly to talk about the grants review. And certainly, the discussions can get quite lively, especially surrounding recommendations. In terms of how we actually review and deliberate, so it's, of course, like lots of moving parts into it, but there's largely a quantitative portion, a qualitative portion, and then a recommendations portion. So the quantitative portion is individual reviewers. We're asked to score each application based on 11 questions on a one-to-five scale. And then when each individual reviewer scores across these different 11 questions, we have some sort of quantitative metric. Now, across our nine committee members, these scores are then averaged. And then we have a list and rank of applicants based on their combined scores and then also their average scores. Now, once we have all these quantitative scale scores, then comes the qualitative review, and that's what the meeting is about. So using these quantitative scores as a starting point, the Grants Review Committee, we meet as a group and we discuss the applicants. We talk about programs that we like, programs that we didn't like. We also talk about, based on our knowledge of the community, program requirements, priorities, knowledges of the community, that sort of stuff. We would advocate on behalf of certain organizations. And after this qualitative review process happens, we all have to agree to move forward. And then we put forward some sort of recommendation, which is what we present to you tonight. The recommendation comes at the conclusion of this process that began in 2020, excuse me, January of 2023. And this process results in the recommendations that we present in front of you. So we eventually, we recommended funding 13 programs. And there's 13 wonderful organizations. Many of them are repeats from last year, although we did have new applicants. And each of these programs also requires a specific project. And so we measured these project names based on feasibility, based on impact on the community. We also look at workforce development, D E and I initiatives, that sort of stuff. And this is the recommendation that we, as a committee, came up with. And so at the lowest end was 6,000, and that was the Smart Kids After School Arts Program. That was all they asked for. Besides that, we did have to make some tough cuts, so not everybody did get funded. And we largely organized our recommendations into two different tiers. Tier one contained the higher scores amongst the quantitative results, tier two being the second highest. And as you can see, we were still able to adequately fund them across the board. So on a low end, 6,000, the next highest level was 8,200, and our highest tier got the 9,000. And so with that, I want to thank you all for your time and attention, and we'll turn it over for any questions that you may have. Thank you.
Councilmember Gibson.
Thank you. This is really cool. I just wanted to note, it's a minor thing, Ira, but in terms of the overview presentation here, where you say environmental considerations, you say not applicable. And that's not right.
It certainly isn't. We actually have one after-school program here that I believe is a tree forest.
Yes, I know. So I think both in terms of reflecting a recommendation, but in the guidance. And I looked at your guidance, which, you know, it's very thorough. And I noticed in terms of sectoral guidance, you know, you've got, at least the sheet that I had said arts and sciences, and then it said workforce development. So, and then others were a little more fuzzy, like quality or things like that. I just wondered to make sure that as you look at the guidance, that environment is a part of quality of life. You may want to explicitly say that. I don't know if it's a part of STEM, STEAM, or what it is. But I'm awful glad to see the Food Forest Group in there and that you recognize that our environment is a part of our quality of life. This is exciting. I'm glad that you're doing this, and the leveraging is wonderful. So thank you.
Certainly. I always appreciate the reminder, and we're happy to edit that council memo to make that point as well, for the record.
Councilmember Hanzak.
I just wanted to say thank you to my Ward Five committee member for your at least two years of service, or have you been on longer even?
Two years.
Two years, yeah, thank you. And I know there are also some other folks from Ward Five who were new to the committee. And I've heard that it's been a positive experience, so thank you for making that happen, everybody. And I just wondered if you could isolate for us here which ones are new to the pool? Can you tell us which ones those are?
I would have to check off the top of my head. I believe docs in progress is new. I'm not sure. Community Bridges, I think.
We have a fuller follow-up that we can give.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, again, I thought folks might be interested out listening to. I think it's really neat that you had at least four new applicants, and that would be exciting to hear more about. Thank you.
Sure.
Councilmember DeBala.
Yeah, thank you. This is great. The committee does a fabulous job of structuring this and organizing what fits the criteria. This is wonderful. I had a couple of specific questions. So there are two that you recommend for not funding at all. That's fine. And in your slides, you say 301(c)(5) or 301(c)(5) or 301(c)(5). Tacoma Mobilization says other. So setting aside that you've rated that project highly, how would the mechanism work? Will it go through the PTA instead or some other group that's? Do you know?
I'll have to check in on that with you, as I'm sure you're aware. We had our grants coordinator who had vetted and approved all the applications before they were passed on to the committee. So I don't have the application details in front of me, but however the application was set up, it was a legally eligible application. So I'm happy to provide that exact information as a follow-up.
I'll just say in the past that the PTAs have been a good funnel for
Yes, thank you.
because they have an umbrella statewide, 501(c)(3). And all of these groups work locally, but some of them I'm not as familiar with. So are any enterprise community development is based where and upwardly global?
Sure. So enterprise community development is actually based out of Essex House. So the after-school programming will be operating will be in Essex House.
That was the name of it. Thank you.
Councilmember DeBala, actually, I just was learning more about that myself just yesterday with the new community manager at Essex House. And it does strike me that there are at least two listed here that are both at Essex House. Just want to point that out. As far as I am aware, unless, and I look forward to learning more. So what else? Which, as I understand, also does provide after-school programming and a two-week summer camp and also enterprise community development. So I, myself, am learning about those.
Great.
And I believe your other question was about upwardly global, which is a sorry, I'm trying to figure out the proper word. Local, as in bigger than just Tacoma Park program, but this funding allows them to specifically target Tacoma Park.
Right. So they're an area organization.
Correct.
With work in Tacoma. Thank you.
Great. Well, I want to echo my colleagues and my appreciation for all of the hard work the committee has done. I know that this is not an easy feat, especially when you have so many good applications. Councilmember Hanzak kind of picked up on a point that I was going to ask about. How were we, in terms of the review process, ensuring that there was going to be adequate coverage amongst the different grantees that may have kind of similar youth engagement, youth after-school programs? And so, you know, our city is a certain size, right? And so did you all take into consideration the number of programs that maybe had slightly different takes but were kind of similar that we wanted to bring in versus other programs? And it doesn't look like there were many that weren't selected, but other programs that might not have been selected but might have hit on a different content area, if that makes sense at all?
Yes. So we did take that into consideration. We certainly grouped them into different categories, whether they are workforce development or serving the youth. And out of the two that we did not select, one of them targeted cybersecurity, we thought, which was good. But we just didn't think that program had enough robustness in what they were proposing in terms of deliverables. The other one was, I believe it was called House of Blessings, and there was just problems with the application. That's why we disqualified them, such as the paperwork that they submitted wasn't the right paperwork. And it just seemed like there were a lot of things that were missing. So we deemed it more of an incomplete application. But we do certainly take that into consideration, sort of the totality. Like Councilmember Hanzak mentioned, for example, there are two programs that are run out of Essex House, and we discussed whether or not this was something that we wanted to take into consideration. We ended up deciding that these programs were unique and distinct and that people do rely on these services. These are both repeat organizations. So we certainly do take that into account, and that's what the qualitative conversations is about.
Great. And for a number of these grantees, because we funded them before, you all were already aware of how they have in the past managed the grants in terms of compliance or reporting and those kinds of things?
Yes. There's a lot of requirements for getting funding from the city. And something else that we do is we do site visits with each of the organizations. And we've discussed talking about having more site visits. And we want to have at least one mandatory. And usually, these site visits, we try to do in person, and we try to partner with members of the committee so that they're well-attended. And so usually, each committee member gets to go to two or three site visits. And it's usually based on availability.
Great. Awesome. Well, again, thank you so much for all of the hard work that the committee has put in. These are some, I recognize a few of the names, and I know the valuable work that they do in the community. And I definitely look forward to hearing about the great work that they're going to do as a result of receiving these funds. And definitely keep the council posted if there are different events that the grantees are having, and it would be beneficial for us to come and participate just to learn more about the work. Definitely let us know.
Absolutely. Thank you.
All right. So next, we're going to move on into our work session. I'm checking the time. The first work session item is the Maple Avenue Connectivity Project Contract Award Recommendation and Draft Ordinance.
Good evening, Mayor and council. Tonight's topic is awarding a contract for the Maple Avenue Connectivity Project. This is a grant-funded project, and we just wanted to give you a little bit of context and background for how the Planning Division manages grants. It is infrastructure funding that we're talking about tonight. A majority of large-scale infrastructure planning projects are funded through federal, state, regional, and county grants. They generally require a 20% match of city funds to 80% of grant funds. We work closely with the Department of Public Works, so planning tends to do the design part of these projects. A good example was the Ethan Allen New Hampshire Avenue Intersection that was rebuilt a few years ago. Planning did the grant to get to the design and construction bid materials, and then we hand it off to Public Works. In that case, in many, in all of these cases, we work jointly with them, and then it's a question of finding the additional funding for construction. We currently manage eight projects. I just wanted to give you a, oops, sorry. There you go. Five require a city match. Three are technical assistance grants, and one is funds without a match. And I wanted to show you, actually, the grants that the Planning Division is handling in FY 23. These are, several of these are multi-year grants, so not all of these dollars will pass through in FY 23. But during this fiscal year, we are handling these grants. The one tonight is the new award, the Maryland Kim Lamphier Bike Ways Grant. And as you can see, it's a $380,000 project for design. $304,000 of that is grant money, and $76,000 is city money, and that is in the FY 24 budget. So the work won't begin until July 1, but we want to get the contract awarded now so the consultant is queued up and ready to hit the ground running. Just quickly, the New Hampshire Avenue Bike Ways Grants, A and B, are on this list for design. We expect to have those designs completed by the end of 2023. The Safe Routes to School money is on this list. That comes through State Highway Administration from the state of Maryland. The COG Council of Governments Transportation Land Use Connection Grants are on this list. We have three that happened during FY 23. That is, they are awarded the end of FY 22. The work happens and will be completed in FY 23, and you will receive presentations on those two, on the Metropolitan Branch Trail, 30% design, and the New Hampshire Avenue Bike Ways, Section D, 30% design, in June. So that work is coming to completion now and will be before you. And the Laurel Avenue Grant, out of that same source, has been awarded already, but has not, we are working now on scope of work, but that work itself won't start probably until late summer. And the last one is a big one, and it skews our numbers a little bit. That was a National Strategic Economic Development Grant that we got from the state. We received $1 million in grant funds. We leveraged $2.6 million in private investment for the acquisition of a long vacant property on New Hampshire Avenue, 6530, and the adjacent 6600 New Hampshire. So those now have new ownership, and they have big ideas, plans taking shape. And I think they're working on financing for next steps. Those acquisitions happened, one in August and one in January. So in FY 23, the last one just a few months ago. So I wanted to set the stage so that you understand the context for tonight's grant discussion, which is the very specific project of the Maple Avenue Connectivity Project. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to Alex Friedman.
Good evening, Mayor, councilmembers. To jump off of where Roz just left us, where Ms. Grigsby just left us, the grant that we were awarded and for which we have signed an MOU is the Kim Lamphier Bike Ways Grant. And that grant in particular, as a little background on its logistics, is kind of a unique grant of the suite of grants that we often get. We have received, or we have applied for and been awarded this grant for over 10 years now. It's been used to fund a variety of things, including most of the stages of the New Ave Bike Way, which runs along New Hampshire Avenue, as well as back when the city acquired additional capital bike share stations, also along New Hampshire Avenue, that was used for those as well. This is a grant that is awarded through the Maryland Department of Transportation, and it is state funds rather than federal funds funneled through the state, which means it gives us a certain level of flexibility, one of which is that, as a grant, it doesn't have a minimum or a cap necessarily on projects. So we get some flexibility in how much we can ask for. One thing that it does require is that we come into the application process with a 30% design in hand. And so in the case of this particular project, we were able to use Metropolitan Washington. And so in the case of this particular project, we were able to use a Metropolitan Washington Council of Governments grant, the Transportation Land Use Connections Grant, to work towards that 30% design, and we're excited to share that in a couple months. And then we can, in this case, we applied for the remaining design work, so all the way up to a 100% design, including the bid construction documents. And then, as I mentioned earlier, because this is state money only, there's less complication around procurement and federal reporting rules, which just makes it a lot easier for us to use the money and use it quickly. So this particular grant award, we were awarded in October of this past year, 2022, a two-year grant to revisit the existing plans for the Maple Avenue Connectivity Project and advance them to final 100% designs in addition to what is new. And we were able to add into this request for grant funding was a feasibility study for the Maple Avenue Bridge, and I'll get into a little more detail about that in a second. But sort of as a summary, the grant amount is for $304,000. That is 80% of the total project cost. The city then is expected to put up a match of $76,000 to total $380,000 for the full project. And part of what I built into that budget, in addition to the cost of just the infrastructure, was also guaranteeing that there was a robust community engagement process that we could include in this beyond just the technical analysis. So what is the Maple Avenue Connectivity Project? It is a project that re-envisioned Maple Avenue, which, as everyone here knows, is one of the most densely populated and most diverse streets in the city, as a multimodal roadway that centers the safety and comfort of people walking, rolling, riding bikes, and using public transit. It is the location of a variety of high-volume public uses, including the community center, the police station, and the library, as well as the primary walking route for three of our local public schools. It also is a major connection between Sligo Creek and the Tacoma Metro and DC bike networks. And there is a large church also located on this. For those who have been paying attention to this project for a while, it used to be known as the Maple Avenue Complete Streets Project. We did make a name adjustment because we still support the concept of complete streets, but the phrasing of that in the world of applying for grants limited the number and kinds of funding we could apply for because it comes with a certain set of expectations for how a roadway is designed and how it's included. And so by tweaking its name a little bit, we could be a little more flexible with where we were looking for money to support this. So just as a review, this is a map. This is actually what we submitted with the application. The project extends from the DC border northward, all the way up across the Sligo Creek Bridge, ending just at the other edge of the bridge. And it's notable that the project is sort of divided into two sections typographically. The southern section is steeper, narrower public right-of-way, and more single-family homeowners living right alongside it. And then the northern portion is flatter, wider, and the people who are living along it tend to be more, living in larger residential buildings rather than single-family homes. So just a little backstory, back history. The project had its origins in a MW COG grant in 2020. We were awarded $50,000 to do a concept design. That project was taken up by Tool Design Group, and they kicked off the project in fall 2020. Throughout that process, there was a variety of public engagement processes, including two virtual stakeholder focus groups, two virtual community meetings, and a city council presentation. This was still in the uncertain throes of COVID, so we were limited in our in-person opportunities for engagement. And I also didn't start working with the city until in between our March and June engagement opportunities, so I wasn't even around to witness them personally. But all of those are documented online on the webpage for this project, for anyone who wants to go back and read transcripts or view Zoom recordings from those meetings. And then jumping for, oh, and then I will note, in addition to these formal notes in the history of the project, I've also been coordinating sort of casual public trimesterly bike safety roundtables and get lots of emails from residents on a regular basis. And this roadway is something that comes up very regularly as a place where people just don't feel as secure as they wish they did riding a bike in the road for a variety of reasons. So then in October 2022, we were awarded our grant, and MOU has been executed, and we have gone through the initial phases of drafting an agreement with the firm that I will present momentarily. Maple Avenue, it's got its challenges. On the southern section, it's a very narrow right-of-way, which limits a lot of how we can flexibly reuse the road space. Conversely, on the northern section, it's overly wide. The widths of the lanes are wider than highway lanes at the moment, and that doesn't even account for the fact that there's full parking on both sides of the street as well. There are high volumes of pedestrian and vehicle traffic, especially during peak school hours. It's a major walking route for all three of the elementary middle schools, plus a variety of daycare and after-school programs. There are disparities in the way that parking is distributed throughout this corridor. People who have the flexibility to park in driveways in their own homes and on the street versus those who are assigned spots in the larger residential buildings mean that there is sort of an uneven distribution of where cars end up along this corridor as far as parking is concerned. And then the Maple Avenue Bridge, for anyone who's been over it in any form of transportation, folks will know that it is too narrow. It is definitely not ADA accessible for the side path along there, and it's reaching an age where it is not yet urgently in need of repair, but it's one grade away from that. Also, this is a corridor with a high crash rate for vehicles, bike riders, and pedestrians. Just to highlight that point a little bit, this is a snapshot from a map that was created by Montgomery County's planning team through their Vision Zero work. This is an interactive crash map that anyone can access online. Unfortunately, oops, it's not that toggable, so I couldn't isolate more clearly this exact corridor, but you can see clustered along this route, all of those little dots represent crashes. The ones that are circled in yellow represent bicycle-specific incidents, all of these that have happened since 2015, between 2015 and 2020. And I think it's sort of easy to get a sense that there are a lot of hotspots, particularly where, around the school and around the community center and the intersection with Philadelphia in particular. But not to focus on all the challenges because I see great opportunity with Maple Avenue, too. You know, we have so many community resources here that there are a lot of fairly intuitive and straightforward changes that can be made to include, improve access to those community resources, increase pedestrian and bike rider safety. We can, the wide right-of-way, particularly on the northern portion of the corridor, offers a lot of flexibility for reimagining the roadway's configuration to meet all the needs of the folks who live around there and travel through there on a daily basis. Opportunities for safer routes to school, so that when I'm out watching school dismissal, I don't have the principal from Piney Branch begging me to do something faster because she has to come out and play as an extra traffic guard on the occasional busy afternoon pickup. And also an improved connection to both the Tacoma Metro and the Sligo Creek Park and Trail system. So the planning efforts that would happen moving forward from here, within this process, within this grant scope of work, I requested not just picking up where we left off and moving forward, because I recognize that the 30% concept design that was put forward was, in a lot of ways, made nobody fully happy. And I do not blame the work of the firm that worked on this prior. The grant that we had was a very tight window, and I think a lot of unexpected issues arose that we just didn't have time to work through in the fullness that they needed. And so part of what I'm excited about is this grant is a two-year grant instead of a six-month grant, and so we will have time to dig into those more deeply. So we'll begin with a revisit of the concept design. Then that will advance to a semifinal 60% design, a final 100% design, the development of a construction bid packet so that when funding is acquired for construction, we can just put it out there and get going. And also the feasibility study for the Maple Avenue Bridge, which is a study that will look at what are the options we have at our disposal for improved bike and pedestrian access, whether it is rebuilding the bridge entirely, adding on to the side of the bridge, a fully different bridge that's just focused on pedestrian or bike riders. We wanted to use this time to study those options because to start the process of bridge building or bridge reconstruction, based on the discussions we've had with the county, is something that would trigger a years-and-years-long process that can be very expensive, and we don't want to start down a path that is not the right path if those are the stakes we're playing with. And then also, as I mentioned prior, I built into that scope of work dedicated funding to make sure that we have a wide range of engagement opportunities, not just public meetings, but also pop-ups, also surveys, also opportunities for more creative engagement strategies to reach especially the folks who live in the high-rise residential on Maple Avenue, who, you know, we have, we know have feelings and opinions about this and who we've not had as easy of a time getting feedback from in the past, so. The expected completion for the design work would be December 2024. That's also when the grant would be expected to be spent by. So to acquire this contractor, we had to go through an open bid process. We released, or sorry, a, yes, an open bid process, where we put out a request for proposals in January of this year. It was open for a month, and we, in the interim, had a meeting for interested firms to ask questions and submit follow-up inquiries. So we closed out the RFP in February, and then a panel of staff from the Housing and Community Development Department reviewed the applications based on a set of criteria that we laid out in the RFP itself. Those focused on the qualifications of the firm, the responsiveness to our application, how well do they understand what we were asking for and the context that we were proposing, how much experience they have working with governments like ours, what were their considerations for racial equity and environmental sustainability? Did they have personnel that could accommodate the needs of this project? And did their breakdown of staff time seem realistic? And also then considerations of references and cost. And then in April, we started going through the process of a preliminary contract agreement, and here we are today with you for a review of the ordinance to approve this contract. And then next, at the next council meeting, we'll have the ordinance for vote. We had four firms that sort of firmly expressed interest originally. We ended up receiving two bids, and this is the contractor that we're proposing that we go with. This is RKNK. They are a firm that the city is well familiar with. They are a large regional firm that provides comprehensive multidisciplinary planning, engineering, permitting, and construction phase services for a wide variety of multimodal transportation improvements, both in the city and in the region. So on our rubric score, the total scoreable points were 15 points total. They scored a 12.75, which was the highest score that we gave. Their proposed cost for the project came in just under the amount we have available at $376,000 and some change. And some examples of other projects that they have worked on in the city include the Ethan Allen Gateway Project and the reconstruction of that intersection, as well as all of the design phases so far for the New Ave Bike Way, and they're also currently working on the upgrade designs for the Metropolitan Branch Trail. Should the city council be pleased with this option, we, upon approval, will sign our contract with RKNK, issue a notice to proceed, and schedule a kickoff meeting as soon as we can. We'd love to get, you know, get rolling as soon as possible so that we can, you know, make sure that we reserve that time that we built into the contract to do the meaningful engagement work as best as possible. And then that will also include our side of the project and their side of the project beginning to map out stakeholders and engagement strategies. So that is all I've got for you. I'm happy to answer any questions you have about any pieces of this proposal, and thank you for your time.
Great, thank you. Councilmember Siemens.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you for being here this evening, giving us this update on this project. It's very important to Ward 4, as you said, half of the project is in Ward 4, and appreciate that. And I've heard both support and concerns from my constituents, and I just wanted to pass along, of course, I think you know that the bike riders are especially interested in this project, and the pushback that I've received from residents is about parking. And so I wanted to just talk about that for a minute because I know, as you said, this is a, just the next phase for this project. There's already been a lot of groundwork laid for this. You know, we have, on that northern section of the project, there are over 1,000 residences, and the vast majority of those are in Ward 4. There's the one in Ward 5, the Essex House Apartments. But parking has been an issue in the neighborhood, and in fact, it's a growing issue because several of the apartment building, the landlords have now started towing people who do not have the permits to park in their lots because there are limits on parking in the apartment building lots. And if you don't have a permit to park there, they'll tow your car. So the residents have been skipping over to other parking lots in the neighborhood, and of course, that just pushed the problem further. But there, you know, has not been enough parking along the street to carry the overflow. And I think many of these buildings allow for just one vehicle per unit. And as you know, many families have two vehicles. And so even though we're in a ward that historically has been the lowest car ownership in the city, it still is, parking has been a problem. So, you know, I've brought this up before during earlier phases of this project, but, you know, other things have happened during that time period, and not the least of which is the council's interest in equity. And as you mentioned, this is a very diverse neighborhood along the northern portion of the project, and I do want to make sure that the interests of these residents are as important as the interests of the other people who use this street. So I would just ask that if it's possible, I'd like to get a copy of any parking analysis that has already been done, and then be tuned in to any new parking analysis that's done so that we can make sure that people so that we can make sure that people's voices are getting heard as the project moves along.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Hansak.
Thank you, Mr. Friedman. I am really, really excited to see this project moving along. For the twenty years that we have lived here, my neighborhood and, my family included, who are bikers, have eagerly wished there was a better route towards the metro and downtown for biking, and my children have ridden that route for years at their own peril. However, I deeply share Councilmember Siemens' concerns over equity. So, and that has always been my main concern about whether this is a feasible project. So I'm just wondering, I guess I have two, two main points, or questions slash just thoughts. One is, I'm delighted that you worked hard yourself to advocate for a strong community engagement proposal. I would like to hear your thoughts on the degree to which this particular contractor, as we sit here and possibly approve this, is really, really well-aligned. You said they got a score of twelve-point-seven-five. But what has been your experience and observations specifically about their capacity to truly, deeply engage with residents, management companies, et cetera, on, on issues surrounding parking? Because we will need them to not only do a parking analysis, I think, but there needs to be something built in where we're actually seeking to help problem solve and troubleshoot in anticipation of what this project will bring potentially, presuming that it would move forward. And I have a lot of concerns about that. We want to create, you know, as Councilmember Siemens said, a situation of equity and solved problems where people feel at peace, that they are going to have their needs met. And then, and then secondly, I wondered if you could speak also to how this aligns with the minor master plan vision overall. There was, the discussions so far has just been issued verbally to us about the pedestrian, green pedestrian bike, I forget how it was worded, but the Green Way. And, and it sounds like this process in some ways has run a little bit parallel to the minor master plan, you know, for good reason up to now. But I wondered how much connectivity there is. I know that your director, who I'm looking at right now, is integrally involved in that. But if you could speak to that a little bit more, I appreciate it. Thank you.
Sure. Thank you. Second one first? For the minor master? So for the minor master plan, to start there, the, the Green Promenade proposal, that was what was first presented by the county's planning team. In our understanding at this point is that they are sort of complementary proposals, that the Green Promenade strategy that's being proposed in the minor master plan amendment is sort of a longer-range vision for the corridor as a whole and that the work, that it would build on the work that has started with this project here, which is sort of, would exist in a shorter timeline. This project is not looking to do any major changes to the public right-of-way's boundaries or the curb size and width in ways that would make it so that any work done now is working against the goals of the, you know, potential whatever the Green Promenade may look like in the future. And I think that idea, as we understand it right now, is established is that it's a bit more of a kit of parts. There's a lot of different approaches to adding new pedestrian space and new bike facility space and new green space and gathering space. But that it is something that is a longer-term vision and that is a bit reliant upon some amount of new infill development or adjusted redevelopment that would go on along the corridor. In the meantime, I see the way that this project fits in now as something that we could do where, you know, as soon as the design work is done, we could apply for funding for construction and get it in the ground as soon as possible. It would look at sort of tried-and-true strategies, particularly focused on adjusting the road's configuration, adjusting the sidewalks and the way that any bike infrastructure is allocated within that roadway space. Did that answer your question sufficiently? I feel like it was a little rambly.
It does, although I'll be honest with you, it leaves me a little bit kind of going, okay, so, so, and perhaps just me misunderstanding the way that you expressed yourself. But it leaves me thinking, and I, and I get that, you know, this has been long on the pipeline. People are anxious for it to happen. But if I'm hearing you correctly, it sounds like this is, let's, let's do this within a couple of years if possible. I guess then we'll go to the construction phase. But this in some ways is going to come before the minor master plan is anticipated to be complete enough for things to really be happening on that. So I would be concerned if you saw this, let's say, as separate in some ways, even if it's well-aligned where you would imagine further construction happening on top of the same things we're building. Because then I would be concerned we aren't, you know, leveraging our resources to the fullest extent, especially looking out for the long haul about this stretch. But again, I may have misunderstood you.
Right. I think, I think the way that I meant to more succinctly say that was that this would be sort of a stepping stone in the direction of the Green Promenade. And that because of its sort of scale as, as laid out to us thus far as, I'm trying not to jump to any conclusions before the, you know, we've seen the final proposal with details from the county. But based on, you know, the publicly available renderings or visualizations, a lot of that is reliant upon sort of significant change to the area. And so something like the Maple Avenue Connectivity Project would be something that starts moving us toward the Green Promenade without it being a single cohesive, one-go mega project. It would be the moving us in the direction of the Green Promenade.
And one thing I do just want to pipe in, and I know, I know I may sound a little Negative Nancy, but I have been living with the Tacoma Langley Sector Plan for a long time. And I, I think it is important for folks to continue to understand that your minor master plan really just kind of helps you to understand what the possibilities are. But it does not dictate anything, nor does it provide us with any monies to implement anything. So there, there will be a lot of pretty pictures. But the goal is to make sure that we understand what the zoning allowances are for the properties, the height, those of the buildings that can be put in, what areas are supposed to be earmarked as green space. Those are the key takeaways, not necessarily thinking that we're going to get the Green Promenade tomorrow because you may be waiting for a long time and be highly disappointed.
I'm pretty sure that Tencent Ancrees isn't coming here.
So I do just want to bring that point in. So while we have, I think, one thing that is great is that we have the minor master plan. We have been engaging with the county. We do kind of know conceptually what they're thinking about. But where we are right now is we actually have some money where we may be able to actually go down the path of designing. So I just wanted to kind of level set a little bit in that regard.
Thank you.
More to Mayor. I'm sorry. To my other colleagues, I really apologize, but as a courtesy, I wanted to talk about the zoning-related issues. If you guys would allow me to go next, and then I'll be out of this one because it's not my ward or anything. So, thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Randy and Cindy. I really appreciate it. The, the thing that I wanted to ask about with regard to this is, as we approach a new set of zoning regulations and those regulations, if they are, if they're to echo what has been on tap, then we're talking about some degree of density, some degree of verticality in certain places, storefront, and a change in the rate of parking spaces per units. And that change is going to be reducing that number. There are, I don't know, I guess there's any number of reasons why people think that's a good idea. But in reality, unless you, unless we are talking about market-based set of new potentialities in the area, you're talking about people who are going to need vehicles. And so I'm curious about whether or not this program acknowledges that, particularly since if, like, technically you can envision things where, you know, if you change the zoning with regard to how many parking spaces you need and you are a landowner and you decide to get rid of some of the ones you have, then it is what it is. The second question I have about that issue is that most of the envisioned area is technically in a floodplain. And historically, once you get to the part of doing the zoning issues of developing an area such as that, that is when you start to have issues with your ilk in a different agency. And so I'm curious about how much communication there's been with regard to the development of this project at the planning, Park and Planning Commission, or with the planning commissioners, or whatever else? And the, I don't know, environmental realities associated with increased rain, some of the things that the people over there already deal with, and those kinds of issues. And I only bring this up and I will get it out of the way is because there are lots of things that I would think could be aspirational about the way in which we handle some of these issues and make them innovative and whatnot. And we do control the right-of-way on those streets. And so I'm curious about what the broader vision is. And I would be candid and say that Roz, if you could speak to it to some degree, because not, not to hate or anything, but just because you've been here for a long time, so you've heard a lot of these things. We have, I know I have direct constituents in Ward Six who are really concerned about the floodplain development issue, so. Thank you, guys.
Sure. I'm happy to answer, and I know Alex is just as capable of answering. I think it's important to specifically call out that we have worked really hand-in-hand with Montgomery County planners, with the minor master plan amendment and the Maple Avenue Connectivity Project. So every time we're talking to them, we're saying, we are working on this. We have thirty percent designs. We don't know what that's going to look like yet. And they say, we are leaving space for this. We know you have thirty percent designs. We don't know what that's going to look like yet. So we very much have made sure that the Maple Avenue Connectivity Project is embedded in the minor master plan amendment as it continues to unfold. The, the parking issues, we're, obviously, we're hearing about, both from council and from residents. The parking that we have any control over is on-street parking. What you're referencing, Councilmember Small, really is the parking on private property. And with zoning changes, there are changes to the maximums or minimums required for parking. You will hear from the county planning staff May twenty-fourth with draft recommendations for the minor master plans. And we'll be back June seventh for a vote from you all to accompany that plan to the planning board on June eighth. It is still in draft stages. It does include zoning changes for the, the area that the Maple Connectivity Project covers, as well as the hospital campus, Maplewood, Part of Flower, that, that section. So there's another conversation coming before you imminently. For tonight, the parking for this project still is not settled. We're still in this design and engineering stage and community engagement stage. And I wanted to take just a minute to finish answering Councilmember Hansak's question about community engagement and the selected contractor, RKNK's, capacity to do that. We have worked closely with them on other projects and seen them in action in community meetings. We also are fully committed as staff to be able to help them reach the granular level that we know we need. And they are a design and engineering firm. Their forte is not specifically community engagement. And so we expect to partner closely with them and help that take shape as it goes. Does that answer? Oh, and I'm sorry, the floodplain questions as well. And again, I think that's really the minor master plan question. It does include environmental and stormwater considerations. We have, again, worked closely with our city staff's expertise and city regulations with county planning staff to make sure that that's embedded in it. For the Maple Avenue Connectivity Project, we haven't really looked at that yet. I know the design plans will include stormwater management on Maple Avenue and, and what needs to happen for that to be successful.
Councilmember Hansak, did you have any follow-up?
Maybe I'll let my colleagues go first. I just, I don't want us to run out of time. But I did want to follow up on that.
No, no, no. We cut you off.
Okay. No, on the community engagement, it's just so important. I, I, thank you for answering, coming back to that question. It's, it's vital before we decide on this contractor. So are you saying that the, you said you, you had advocated, Ms. Friedman, for the funding for community engagement? Are you saying that some of that funding has been set aside, not from the contractor, to support your city staff in doing some of this engagement? I, I will, I will just say that I, I know you have done some good, good sessions online and things, but you, you don't have a lot of physical staff, to my knowledge, to go out and do the kind of engagement I am trying to imagine, just knowing how much time it does take to do the kind of engagement I suppose will be involved. It does give me a little pause about whether we've set aside enough resources and maybe if we need to rally to try to find more with you and hand-in-hand with you to make sure you've got the human bodies to go out and do the kind of dialogue that I would imagine is in order.
I'll start. As part of the initial round of proposals, we, as staff, sent back questions to the firms that submitted bids. And the questions were primarily around, can you offer us more community engagement? And RKNK was the firm that came back with what we felt was the stronger proposal that seemed more responsive to what we were asking, which was more kinds of engagement outside of the normal, traditional format because we know that that doesn't work well for the constituencies that we're looking at along Maple Avenue. So in addition to having a larger portion of their proposal be allocated toward community engagement work, I would say that in addition to that, as a staff, I mean, for me personally and for our whole team, I, I'm really excited about, that's the bit of the job that is really fun for me to go out and hang signs and knock doors and post flyers. And you're right that we are a small capacity. And so we will work with what we are able to. This is sort of the biggest project that, at this stage in the process that we will have going on at the time over the next year. So maybe I'll hand it over to you if you want to elaborate on that anymore.
Councilmember Gibson.
Yeah, just a couple of questions. One, kind of building on this engagement. It struck me when you were saying that, you know, the revisiting the concept, that we're already, you're, you're asking to, to, to take on a contractor at this point when we're revisiting the concept. I guess, tell me whether that, whether that makes sense. Obviously, it does, otherwise you wouldn't be proposing it. But is there not also perhaps a question about working more on the concept with, with, with citizen engagement before we got a contractor?
No, sorry.
No, that's one question, but go ahead if you want.
Thank you. I, I think that was a useful reminder to me that a lot of this process involves a lot of like engineering jargon that doesn't necessarily track to laypeople's speech. So when I say concept plans, that's the same as a preliminary plan, which is the same as a thirty percent. track to laypeople's speech. So when I say concept plans, that's, um, some, the same as a preliminary plan, which is the same as a thirty percent plan, which is a, a traditional stage in the engineering process, which is the concept development in the technical sense. It's, it's starting to lay out the broad swaths of what could go where, how could things look? Um, and so, the, that is the time when the deepest community engagement is done, and the, the vision for what this corridor looks like could happen. Um, and then that, that sort of, you know, we, we built the lump of clay, and then in the next phase, that's when we start to refine the sort of discernible features. And then after the sixty percent stage, that's when things, um, as far as major changes in the process or the outcome start to become less, uh, they become more nuanced and small because that's when all the technical work to make the earlier stages is done, um, and, and put into practice.
Okay, so you're saying that, that this is the time that you would do the kind of, uh, in-person as well, as much as you can, the outreach, the engagement as you can to, to, to make choices moving forward? And the other was this sort of, a, a question, so I'm not real, real, super familiar with, with, with the project. In terms of talking about minor master plan, talking about n- needs right now and some challenges in terms of equity, are, are, is the, I guess, are we, are, are we building, looking to build something for now? Are we building something for a, a five-year future? Are we, uh, are we expect, uh, are we building assuming some significant change or not? Uh, just, uh, it, it's, it's just sort of with a lot of balls in the air, certainly minor master plan and, uh, the, the uni- uh, the university site, et cetera. Um, I'm just wondering i- if it's the right time to, 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 to build something which, with, with some significant changes, uh, perhaps underway? Or if, if this is built for, for, for the needs in the foreseeable future?
Thank you, Councilmember. Um, of course, there will always be elements that we can't predict with or without plans. Um, but I, I foresee this project, and I think the way we've been approaching it as a team is looking at it, um, in a lot of the lenses that the county has applied to this corridor. They identified Maple Avenue as a, as a corridor within their bicycle master plan, which is meant to look out ten, twenty years. Um, identified this as a, as a corridor that needs improved bicycle infrastructure. Um, layered onto that, uh, they are also working on a pedestrian master plan at the moment, um, which also uh, does not specifically name this corridor, but a lot of the deficiencies they name in the kinds of corridors like this are present here now. Um, so I think that um, much as we are starting to do with the reimagining or the re-upgrading of the Metropolitan Branch Trail is, um, how can we design this to the best possible standards that we know now? Um, and we have the fortune of having this minor master plan process in process, so that we can feed that information to our um, consultant team, so that they're not designing a path for right now, but they are looking forward. Um, that said, I also would say that we're probably, even if we get a major full redevelopment of the Adventist campus in the next ten or twenty years, um, the scale of bicycle infrastructure in particular that would be needing to accommodate that kind of growth doesn't, um, in my experience, change super dramatically, um, based on the scale of what that would be.
So the plan prob- if I might, i- is meeting some existing needs, correct? I mean, correct me if I'm wrong. And then you're looking at sort of a likely scenario going forward, and that it doesn't need to expand greatly, even if there are significant changes. Is that fair enough?
For now, that's what I would say, um, and, and know that we will, through this process, will be continually, continuously like taking new data and, and working that into it. Thank you.
Councilmember DeBala?
Yes, I think, I think all of my questions have been asked. And I, I like that we're revisiting the thirty percent concept and, and doing it by community engagement, not just revisiting the physical design.
Right.
Because I, I remember also parking bicycles and pedestrians, and, and that we hadn't quite resolved that, so I think that's great. I, I have, um, confidence in R, R K K, um, because I've seen them work on the other side of town. Um, and I like that there's an emphasis on all the different approaches to reaching people in the corridor. So I'm good. Thank you.
Councilmember Siemens?
Thank you, Mayor. Just one other quick requ- request. Uh, on slide twelve, you talk about the, uh, planning efforts moving forward. And I would just ask that, uh, you know, this doesn't have much granularity here. I wonder if you could, eh, when we develop a schedule, uh, if you could, uh, share that with the council, please?
Um, yes, um, I'm trying to get to that slide, but.
It doesn't matter, it's immaterial.
Um, nevertheless, yes, we will absolutely, um, share the schedule of our plans moving forward, and we will try our best to up, um, keep up to date the project page on the city website with the most up-to-date information we have about any engagement opportunities, projected, um, events, uh, planning milestones that we know about, and that we will also communicate out through other sort of avenues as well.
Thank you.
Uh, Councilmember Hanzak?
Actually, actually, my, my, my colleague just pulled off his button, and I think he went, go ahead.
I just had a small thing about the engagement, and that was with regard to, uh, language services, and, um, if that's a component part of their bid or if we are paying for it.
I'm sorry, could you repeat that?
Language services, given the, the diversity in the area?
Um, that's something that, um, they have committed to do, um, interpret, uh, translation of materials for their outreach, um, for interpretation services. That's something that I think our department would probably add on to the equation, um, where if they were not able to provide that themselves. And to be quite frank, at this point, we're developing relationships with, um, various interpreters and interpreting firms that are more familiar with the kinds of meetings that we run, um, here. And so, I feel like us building out those relationships on our terms is something that is beneficial to our broader programmatic efforts as well.
If I can just, just add really quickly, um, we have learned a lot in the last two years, especially with Alex's good work on how to run multilingual meetings. And we have been bringing additional city staff in along in the process, so um, we are getting better at this and doing real-time interpretation U, UN-style, um, with earpieces and the tech, the hardware to do it. And so, um, it's been an exciting and interesting and, uh, sometimes challenging process, but, uh, we are all in on that. Um, we hope that council will join soon too and provide those services.
Excellent. Councilmember Hanzak?
I, I'm sorry to speak so, so many times. I just, um, as, as I listen to Councilmember Gibson speak, I'm gonna say, I'm gonna say something everyone's gonna, um, it's just, I, I, I am so excited about this project, and I have a lot of apprehension too about what could happen. Um, and, and I'm, I'm delighted you're headed, eh, where I would want, where I would wanna see you head in terms of community engagement, um, and saying all the right things and checking all the right boxes. Um, but we, I, I am fearful that this could turn into another Tacoma Junction. Dare I say that out loud. Um, because, because we're talking about pitting, in this case even more so maybe than Tacoma Junction, we're talking about pitting higher-income residents in some ways, and the, the, right now, the pre- those who ride bikes tend to be our higher-income residents for the most part. Um, and against lower-income residents who need their cars. And, and so, I guess I just, my, my last parting words are here. Please, please, please lean hard on your council persons to support you, to reach out, um, especially Councilmember Siemens and myself and the mayor, uh, who, and, and, uh, let's see, and, and Councilmember Fulcher, I believe that also goes through her ward. But please lean very hard on us, um, without hesitation, to get into those spaces as efficiently um, and as effectively as is needed, so we can, uh, make sure that does not happen to the city staff, and the city staff doesn't get thrown under the bus for not having thought about these things, which you're trying very hard to do, but it is really, really phenomenally difficult to do, I will tell you. Um, so, anyway, as if you didn't know.
Thank you, and, and we will take you up on that offer.
Excellent. Well, I just want to echo my colleagues in appreciation for the presentation tonight, and the, um, I just wanna highlight, you know, the effort to go after the money. We hear a lot um, of residents that are asking for us to be able to go out and search for um, external funds to support our work, and this is a wonderful example of how you all have been able to not only grab onto some external dollars, but leverage additional, um, relationships so that we're able to bring this project to, to completion. Um, I echo, um, my colleague's sentiments around trying to make sure that we're really, um, in the community, engaging folks in a way, and, and I appreciate the approach of engagement around, once we have these concept plans, 'cause I mean, with a lot of these infrastructure things, people don't respond until they see it, which is unfortunately sometimes a little too late, but, um, it's one of the biggest things that is going to really just ensure the success of, um, this implementation. And, um, again, just, uh, echoing Councilmember Hanzak, call on us. We're, we're happy to knock on doors with you and encourage people to come out to the meetings, um, so that we can really try to get this thing done. But, um, so with that, thank you all so much, and we're actually gonna let you go before ten o'clock.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Awesome. Okay, so we have one last item, and so my question for colleagues, do we need a break? Or do we wanna power through? Break? Okay, all right, let's take a five-minute break.
Oh, my God.
Work session. And the item that we are going to discuss is, and I want to thank Councilmember Dibala, the proposed resolution establishing a policy objectives associated with the fiscal year 2024 budget. So just as a reminder for colleagues, one of the things that came out of our budget discussion was that there were a number of policy-related matters that came up over the course of our budget discussions. Members of council have provided a list of some of the policy areas that we're interested in, but I recognize that some of my colleagues have highlighted some other policy areas. So what I would like for us to be able to do is to talk a little bit about the proposed resolution. And there's a couple of points that I do just want to make sure that we are clear on, one, the specific policies. So you want to make sure that we're able to, that we are prioritizing, that we address as it relates to our fiscal health. And then also, for certain matters, there's a regarding like briefs or staff support, making sure that we have some clarity regarding the timing of any updates that the council would receive. So first, I do want us to talk briefly, and just as a reminder for members of council, in our list of priorities as part of our priority regarding a long-term fiscal sustainability strategy for the city. One of the points that was brought up as part of our priorities was that we would look at things like our equipment replacement reserve, our facility maintenance reserve. And so what we have before us in terms of the first item is we are resolving that we will review revenues, expenditures, and reserves, and economic projections throughout the fiscal year. And the city manager will present to the council with quarterly fiscal reports on expenditures and revenues. So that's one of the first items. And I believe Councilmember Gibson. Oh, no, that's about the budget, the timing of the budget. I'm sorry, I just saw holding quarterly review of discussion of fiscal.
Yeah, the first resolved is very similar to what's been in the budget ordinance in previous years. And so just FYI. Just getting a little more specific about the quarterly fiscal reports.
Okay, so are there any comments? Let's take this piece by piece in terms of the quarterly fiscal reports. One of the things, I know that this is something that was in prior budget ordinances. And I'm gonna rely on my colleagues that have been along for the ride for a while. Those, did we, do we, did we ever receive necessarily quarterly reports? So were they really more around quarterly whenever we had a budget amendment?
So I would also like to say a few things about the resolution generally, just to set the stage. But to answer your question, when I started on the council, we got quarterly financial reports. They were some, but not all of the time, at the same time as a budget amendment. The goal was to have them together. And they were presented publicly by the city manager during a meeting. And then council members and residents could ask questions about that. In recent years, it's been, it hasn't worked that way, particularly the part about discussing in a public. So I put this in here because I wanted to to see if we all agree that we should return to that practice of discussing, of getting the quarterly fiscal reports that Director Chung does. And in practice, it actually amounts to the first quarter, because and then the second quarter is the first and the second, the first quarter is pretty early. The second quarter is where a lot of the more bigger trends are more clear. And then by the third quarter, we're into the budget. So the fourth quarter is the end of the year report. So that's covered already. Before other council members speak, because I see at least one person getting ready, I just want to say that what I, we all agree that there's work to do before the next budget season. So we don't wind up with some of the same questions we had this year. Based on the, everything I heard, both from council members and from residents, I focused on these three areas. One, just repeating the periodic fiscal review that was previous practice. So I didn't, I didn't actually see that as a big deal, but maybe it is. Secondly, looking at specific policies that affect how we give value out of our equipment and vehicles. And third, looking at alternative revenues, because we have the expenses, we have the revenues, we have reserves. So we haven't, in the context of the budget, the annual budget, we haven't spent a lot of time focusing on the other revenues. So that may not be the right two things, the right two areas, but that's how I set it up.
And I just want to say, Councilmember Dibala, when we, I think those are the right two buckets. When we were undergoing the priorities discussions, the reserve policies was one, and I believe the revenue sources or looking for alternative revenues was one is what was a strategy under the fiscal sustainability.
Similar read, because I have it right here. The fiscal sustainability strategy, revenue options, property tax, credit, and adjustment, which doesn't really fit in here. And improvements in the budget process and presentation, which may or may not fit in here, which is something that Councilmember Gibson is proposing to add. I would also like to say one other thing to echo the mayor's concern about the staff capacity to do this. I would rather pick a shorter list and focus more specifically on a couple of things than to try to be so ambitious that we don't actually, we overload the staff and don't actually get any of this done. So you'll notice I did narrow down a little bit from a previous version, the section on fiscal policies related to vehicles, equipment, and facilities, to try to tighten it up to what are we really looking to do there?
So I just want to make sure. Okay, so nope, I hear you. So on the table, and I know that there's two other points, just to make sure that everyone's aware of some of the feedback that was provided. So as Councilmember Dibala mentioned, the quarterly fiscal reporting, the reserve policies, I'm just gonna lump that together.
Where are you getting reserve policies?
The equipment replacement policy, maintenance policy, equipment replacement reserve.
Thank you, yes.
And the, and the revenues. Councilmember Gibson is proposing a resolve clause that relates to the timeline of the budget process. And then Councilmember Siemens, I know that we discussed your point around if we are looking at the budget in this way on a regular basis, we should also be reviewing our priorities. As I explained to Councilmember Siemens, there was a clause in our priorities resolution that we voted on that noted that we would follow up on those priorities periodically. And as I mentioned to Councilmember Siemens, we could just, I've already written it on my running agenda that we would put an item on the agenda to discuss our priorities. Because again, if we are directing staff to devote a lot of energy to Councilmember Dibala's point as well in a particular area, then we need to be mindful of the fact that there may be a number of different areas that they're not going to be able to get to. And we just all need to be transparent in terms of what those expectations should be.
Mayor, if I may? I'm willing to withdraw my suggested amendment if you're willing to put that on the agenda in the near term.
Yes, sir. So I am flagging this for the city clerk, if you could just keep me honest when we have our agenda meetings, to have this item on the, placed on the agenda for sometime in the month of June.
So, if I may.
I totally have my button pushed.
Okay, go for it.
So all due respect, if you were to look at our charter, in section 901 of the charter, it says city clerk and treasurer. And section B and C says, "There shall be a treasurer who shall keep a full and accurate record of the finances, revenues, and expenditures of the city, and shall perform such other duties as may be required by the charter or the council." Section C, "The city manager may appoint a treasurer or assign the duties of that office to some other employee of the city." There are things about the way that this is organized candidly that are confusing to me. And one of them is that in a conventional situation, that would be the primary issue here. And if you have a treasurer, then to some degree, since that person has some degree of autonomy from the appointment of the city manager, at least nominally, you allow for that person to be able to do regular reports and/or require the assistance of staff in a particular way. The fact that we are even having this component of this discussion is again, frankly, amazing to me. And I would hope that as a component part of the things that we end up discussing, my impending motion or ordinance to require that we have an actual treasurer so that we can invest one of our senior staffers that has been the most competent and willing to stand in the breach when the executive function was complicated, the ability to speak whatever truth to power in a regular fashion any other municipality would expect.
So we'll need to check, but it's my understanding that because the language in the charter says, "or appointed employee," that that would probably be our finance director, Susan Chung.
No, I think we should name her treasurer. That's what I am saying. And so I have no compunction about changing any person in the staff whatsoever. But I do feel strongly that we should empower that person to do a function that has, to some degree, some sort of political mandate as understood over the course of time and in the Maryland Home Rule statute.
So we can, we can look into that. But one of the things that I think is important about this particular resolution is that although we are talking about it from the perspective of we've just finished up the budget and the like, it really is helping us to set the stage for what we want to see as a council so that we can organize ourselves as it pertains to, as I see it, implementing various aspects of what we've already said is a priority as part of our council priorities. A number of these items, we had already included in that large master list of strategies. And a lot of these things, ultimately, the council is responsible for having staff come to present to us and making a decision regarding what we want, how we want these things to be implemented. So I hear you, Councilmember Small, that, you know, it shouldn't be up to us in terms of presenting these quarterly reports. But it is helpful to know that council is in agreement that we want these reports quarterly versus biannually versus annually. Or that council wants for sure for there to be items on the agenda so that we can start to tackle the reserve policy and the facilities maintenance reserve policies. And/or the council wants to definitively make a decision regarding the timing and how we want to start the budget process. I think that's helpful for staff as well as for our own agenda setting.
Okay, then I would say, Mayor, in response to that, that I'm in no way in opposition to any of the things that you just outlined. What I would say about those things is that I would anticipate that changes to the code or to the larger philosophy of a sort of institutional drag on resources that is established and outside the bounds of what anybody does could potentially be acrimonious. But if people are concerned about the prospect of democracy, then the way that we currently do it is not that. And so I would like to say with some degree of certainty that putting things on a schedule may indicate some degree of bureaucratic efficiencies. But if you look around But if you look around at the manner in which those things are doled out and distributed, um, particularly with regard to traffic, there are any number of things that would indicate um, that that's a bad way to do things and also that it does skew toward affluent or sedentary people.
Councilmember Dabala?
Can I make a suggestion, which is only part of what I understand Councilmember Small to be talking about, but, but um, perhaps it would help if instead of put, putting the city manager in charge of the fiscal report, we just say finance director. Yeah, well, a good point, and I'm suggesting we change that.
Excellent, thank you.
While we're in the process of researching the other stuff, so that's easy.
Question about, um, while we're on this, this first uh, resolve clause. Question for the acting deputy city manager is the cadence of a quarterly financial report or update challenging for staff? I, I do feel like we already um, do this kind of in practice, but in terms of the budget amendments.
I don't know. Excuse me, um, you know, my, my first reaction is I think Q1, I don't think there will be much to report. That will be substantially different from the budget. A lot happens between Q1 and Q2, so I think Q2, I think is a more robust conversation. The piece that I don't, I can't quite fully comment on is I, I, I have not witnessed a fiscal report be provided to council before outside of the budget process. So I don't know what the expectation is, uh, and what, you know, what you want to see delivered. Uh, I think the other piece that is uh, unknown for me that um, you know, I can get some clarity from, I think my staff is, is what level of effort is required to prepare the documents? I mean, I, I, it wa- it can't be anything like the budget process, of course, right? And so it's, it's uh, I'm, I'm just not certain, uh, again, not knowing kind of what the expectation is and not, um, not having yet had a conversation with staff, I don't really know how to gauge uh, at what point during the year the, the, the fiscal report can actually be provided, you know? So if Q1 ends, um, is it a month or two months after that point that we can actually have the conversation because of data takes some time to collect? I quite honestly don't know.
I can go back and find a couple of examples of, of what, what was the practice when, a couple of managers back? And um, you can just look at the tapes.
And if it's been done before, I think it could be done again.
Exactly. This is, this, this one is not to intend, not intended to add anything other than to return to the fact of doing it publicly.
Publicly.
And being able to discuss it publicly.
And to, yeah. Yeah, and to Councilmember Dabala's point, I think one of the reasons why I was like, did we do them, did we not? It, but it was something that was often talked about in conjunction with the budget amendments. And I think that during the last large budget amendment with the prior city manager, there was a lot of uh, requests for modifying how that budget amendment was presented. And hindsight, I think it was because we needed more information around the impacts of those budget amendments on our actual budget. And that's what I think that fiscal, that quarterly report piece kind of helped us to understand. Where we have all of these expenditures that we now, for various reasons, need to reallocate. But it wasn't really clear in the way in which the budget amendments were provided that what, what that meant to our bottom line in terms of, is it setting us on the stage to go further in a, a, in debt in terms of our revenues extending, our expenditures extending the reserves? Where were we pulling, it, it really wasn't clear. And so I think that maybe some of the modifications that we've already proposed as part of the budget amendment templates may help. Um, but also just as a way for us to make sure that we're able to provide the council and the public with a more general understanding of what these impacts may mean for the overall, where we stand in terms of the budget in a more general way and kind of an update in that regard.
And, and for my part, I'm not thinking of any, I'm not thinking of anything more than the quarterly reporting format that Director Chung already knows and does. But being able to hear it and explain it and connect it to the budget amendments.
Makes a ton of sense to me. I think council should be informed along the way, so we'd be, we'd be happy to, to have that discussion publicly. Mayor, when appropriate, I do have some questions about uh, the, the second resolve.
Yep. I just want to do a quick check for members on the council, whether or not there are any questions regarding the first resolve. Otherwise, we will move on to the second.
I, I do some of that.
Yes, I do.
Oh.
I, I was, I was going to ask what you did, but I, I just, I just want to be clear. So Director Chung has been consulted on the quarterly aspect or has done it before, is what you're saying, Councilmember Dabala? You're certain that?
What I'm saying is that she has done it in the past. I, I have not.
Has, has she been consulted about whether there were any iss-? I mean, it's, it seems like fairly standard practice across most agencies I'm familiar with, but again, I, I don't know if there's some reason why it was dropped. So it, it leaves me wondering whether by, let's say, passing this tonight, without consulting Director Chung, I would be uncomfortable with that.
Sure, and, and we're not passing it tonight.
Okay, okay, thank you.
This is the discussion, and I completely agree that once we know what it is we're asking, we, we would want the city manager to consult with Director Chung.
And can I, and I, I have a further question for our city manager. Director, I mean, um, manager, Eubanks, uh, did you, you said earlier this evening, and I'm trying to remember exactly what you said, but you said that you were planning on uh, having some regular weekly reports, I thought I understood, about our financial situation? Can you elaborate a little bit and, and kind of, I know you may not have had time fully to think through how that compares to this request, but?
That was just a, that, uh, what I mentioned earlier is simply to give some insight into the process, the budget process. It's not meant to report um, on any actual, um, provide any actual data. Not meant to give any insight into the um, uh, the purchases and expenses. It's meant to inform council and the public of uh, how after the budget, um, and leading up to the budget, what needs to be done to prepare ourselves and prepare others for the conversations.
So, oh, so you were referencing what you would propose to do in the future leading up to the final passage of the budget, not in the coming weeks?
Uh, the, the com- as a for instance, tonight I was talking about what our finance department had to do in order to get us to the second stage after the budget, right? Which is the preparation of the ordinance and um, the finalization of the reconciliation. The next conversation about the budget, which we'll have on a weekly basis, is what happens after the resolution is proposed and what needs to be provided to the county.
Okay, okay, thank you for clarifying.
And so it'll just be kind of a step-by-step discussion of the process involving the budget, not necessarily the details of the budget, talking about numbers, so on and so forth.
Okay, I, I somewhat misunderstood earlier, thank you.
So um, now let's talk about the second resolve. Councilmember Dabala, was there, I know that you had a few edits. Just want to make sure that you don't have any, any setup for this one.
So, thank you. So just to, just to say that in, in, after talking with the acting city, acting, acting deputy city manager, Eubanks, um, trying to be a little more specific about exactly if we, if we take this project on, exactly what we're looking to do, because it, it was much broader before. So really trying to focus in on the criteria for a couple of things. The assumptions behind the reserve policy and then facility maintenance reserve policy. We don't have one yet. And, and the, and the question that I have is whether this is the thing we should do first. I just would like people's feedback on that, or whether there are other things that we want to tackle before we tackle this particular chunk. If, if the, if the long, if the goal is to, we have, if the long-term goal is to get revenues and expenditures and reserves back in balance after the COVID years, what's the things we need to do first? Because we can't do everything at once. So, so as you think about this, is this one of the things we should be looking at first?
Councilmembers, Councilmember Small?
I would say that um, all of these things are a good idea. And the first two will require code changes. But the s- third and uh, fourth will require some sort of, of policy discussion. And I would say that I would hope that this municipality would lean on the expertise, particularly of Mr. Peck at MML, and to look at all of the other municipalities that do this in an efficient way. And thereby, I will ne- also reference my statement during the public statements about norms, because I believe that's what I was talking about. And um, rather than um, say any adjectives, I will leave my comment at my reference about the need um, to maintain some kind of consistencies. Because we are not special.
So um, thank you, Councilmember Small. So um, it sounds like folks think that this is something that we should work on, keeping in mind that code changes um, are, are usually pretty, pretty iterative. With council. You, you said it, I didn't. I was trying to put it delicately, very time-consuming. And then, uh, but the reserve policy, um, may be a lighter lift because it's modifying the reserve policy, but still will require a bit of time. The next?
I apologize, Mayor, but I do have one more thing to say about that. I would also um, strenuously suggest that we um, at least um, get a formal opinion from Susan Chung about um, the last two things as she is an exceedingly competent professional.
Okay, thank you for that.
Mayor, um, if I could comment before you move on. I think Councilmember Small, I, I really appreciate your point about your mention of best practices and norms. That was one of my big concerns. It, it wasn't clear to me what we meant by review. And so I'd, I'd like, if that is what we're suggesting via that word, I think we should add that as um, a point of clarification. It, it does give us a sense of, you know, when we say review the criteria, what we're reviewing it for. And so if, if, if we're viewing to ensure that uh, our existing policies are in line with best practices and norms, that, that gives us some very clear specificity in how we should proceed. So I, I, I would be an advocate of adding that kind of language. Um, I think council should be aware of a couple of things. I, you, you may very well be right, Councilmember Small. It's not clear to me that these would require code changes necessarily. I don't know. But I, it, nothing stands out to me as a requiring a change to the code. The thing though that would be, you should know, um, I think for the, the road maintenance policy and the equipment replacement reserve in particular, those were developed not by staff, as I understand it, but by consultants with a particular expertise uh, in those areas. Um, and so when we're looking at the, the criteria for and assumptions behind, it, it may very well be that there's a limitation to the, to the level of in-house review that we can do. Uh, so I don't think that they will be simple fixes. Um, they may be very, very in-depth fixes, and if, particularly if we're looking to change them um, in any way, uh, it, it may require that we identify some additional resources to further that discussion.
And um, Director Eubanks, I just wanted to say that that's well heard, at least by me. And what I would say in uh, in quick response is that I argue that, that the road maintenance policy and the um, traffic safety components of it are probably hand in hand with regard to a long-term plan about how to spend in those resources. Particularly since we were talking about a distinction between 20 years and 25 years and some other things like that. And with regard to uh, the equipment maintenance and the potentiality of a potential facility maintenance policy, and the consultants, um, I would say that um, again, in this regard, I would say the same thing I said to the guy who was sitting here from Florida, who in my estimates, we shouldn't have paid because the people at the University of Maryland like doing these kinds of things for people. And because you guys are aware and competent, I, I feel like the balance between those kinds of things will work to our advantage and be considerably cheaper.
Councilmember Gibson?
I'm not sure where I was other than um, I, I, I do, it's, it's difficult for me to say which is the most important thing for us to be working on. As, as Cindy said, uh, we don't want to go through a, a budget cycle like we did before. If taking on a, a couple, a couple of these were clearly needed some greater clarity and some flexibility. Otherwise, we were saying, staff was doing what the policy said, and we were asking them, well, can you change, do it a little bit differently? But the policy says, so look, I, I, so I do agree that these need to be looked at. They should be looked at in terms of whether there's uh, additional uh, technical support, as, as, as the city manager says, and whether there's flexibility that we as a council can have on it. So I, I'm, basically I'm supporting these, these, keeping these. Again, I'm not sure we have to do all three of the four of them. That, we, we, we should, we should give ourselves the flexibility and the staff the flexibility to step into it and take one at a time and see how far we can get.
I have one more point on this.
Yep.
Councilmember Siemens, did you wanna?
I, I can be real quick.
Okay.
If I may. I, I would just say that, you know, with these reserves, I think one of the issues that we noticed during the uh, council budget discussions this year is that uh, some of us are new and unfamiliar with these policies. And so for that reason alone, I think it's important that we uh, we spend some time to look at them. And I also think, you know, some people have suggested whether it be flexibility from the council or maybe looking at the um, uh, you know, these things were developed, these policies were just developed uh, several years ago. And maybe it's a, a good time to just sit down and see if the um, if there's any feedback that we can look at and say that, yes, this is, uh, this is working right. I'll give you an example with road maintenance. We said, okay, roads should be maintained or redone every 20 years. Well, we have some experience now. Can we look at that and say, well, is that, is that a reasonable amount of time? Or are we doing it too soon or too late? So I, I support this. I don't, I don't see it as a, as an effort to do away with things. I think it's, I'm against the council having too much flexibility in this because uh, too often councils or city managers can use this to, as a, as free money and just shove problems downstream, which uh, hampers future councils.
Are there any other, because Councilmember Dabala? Are there any other, because Councilmember Dabala, your light is up next and then Hanzak. But Councilmember Hanzak, do you have any, um, comments on this point?
This being the whole resolved, yes.
Um, the resolved around the equipment reserves?
Around all the reserves, yeah. Okay, is that okay?
Yeah.
Okay. Um, I, I, I just wanted some clarity. I had made myself a short list of the policies. I felt that based on my proposed budget amendments need, were needed. And among those, I also had included, um, revisiting the policy for the emergency reserves, to restock the emergency reserves and, um, and I know this is a hot topic, but the policy of the 17% reserve, um, and kind of a discussion around that. Now, I, I, it is my understanding that that took a very long time for the previous council to put in place. So I'm hesitant to even put that out there. But, um, I do think it's worthy of a discussion by this current council in light of our fiscal concerns. And, um, maybe if, if nothing else, it would be an orientation to the new staff on the, or, or maybe just a hard delivery too. I, I'm not sure it belongs in here, but it definitely, uh, to me needs to be a part, and part and parcel of this conversation around our reserves, our policies and the big picture of that 17% and how it relates to the other reserves that we have, um, as a city. Which right now I don't see them being very clearly tied to one another. So, um, that would be helpful. I, I would like to see some language in this, um, Councilmember Dabala that speaks to the prioritization being perhaps, uh, given by the city manager after a cursory review of sort of the viability and talking to MML, um, a proposed prioritization of, you know, where we might begin. I mean, maybe that should come from council, I don't know, but I'm just, I'm just suggesting some language that would come in this paragraph.
Uh, I'm, I, I'm not sure I completely understood that. So let me, let me see if I, if, if I've got this right. So rather than, rather than saying we're gonna do all of these, we would say based on discussions with the city manager about best practice information available from somewhere else or something like that.
That we would, that, that we would prioritize, yes, yes, based on that kind of dialogue. Uh, or a cursory review, as I said, because in eight months, do all that does seem over ambitious to me.
Right, and so one of the things I wanted to point out was that I did, instead of saying the city council directs the city manager and staff to do X, Y, and Z, I, I set it up as if we were going to have a subcommittee that would work with the city manager. So, um, so I don't, for me, I don't think it's a problem to tweak, to, to resolve, to re, to revise the words of this resolved section to include first and very importantly, uh, the idea that we are reviewing them for the purpose of looking at best practices. Yes, and then also to say, once we know that, what word, you know, then, then what order we would tackle this in.
Um, I was just going to say, uh, please actually write those two words down.
Yes, I already wrote them, actually wrote them down right here.
And, um, that, uh,
I was assuming.
I'm hoping and I'm certain that the research capacities of, uh, the staff are such um, that they're at least as good as, uh, lawyers. Because this is imminently doable.
Yeah. Thank you.
Okay, so it sounds like we are keeping these items. Um, and, uh, of course, as, uh, Councilmember Dabala, the plan is to develop a, uh, a council subcommittee to work on these things. I know that folks had sent me some, um, suggestions for prioritizing. But after the budget, I think it was better for us to take some time to really rethink our, where we want to focus. Um, and to kind of use some of these after-action items as a way to establish our committees versus basing them solely on the, on the, um, priorities themselves. So, uh, the next resolve clause is around, um, the feasibility of potential additional revenue sources.
And may I say one thing? And so someone is gonna have to take this and re, revise it. And I can do that and circulate it based on our discussions tonight.
The one we just talked about.
Well, there'll be more.
There'll be more.
Yes.
Okay, so are there any other potential revenue, um, options that need to be explored? I think one of the things, uh, for this particular, the option around the revenues, oh, we should probably do the vacant, oh, the vacant property tax too.
I keep forgetting that one.
We could, we could, we could reconsider, uh, the inventory tax.
I think that should be on there.
I, I mean, we can, for, for folks that aren't, we can put it on there as a topic, but I will say.
Yeah, that's all in it.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Just so that folks can get caught up on why we got rid of the inventory tax. It negatively impacted a large number of small businesses particularly in, yep.
I'm, I'm completely fine with that. I just think it should be on there for looking at stuff. The other thing I was gonna add, um, to this is, um, that there are, um, some fees associated with the conducting of business um, that I do understand that we have a significant number of micro businesses. But, uh, graduated fee schedules or graduated taxes with regard to the amount of revenue that people are generating in the personal property tax arena, um, I would think should be on here.
Say that again.
I would say some sort of graduated personal property tax.
Oh, okay.
Associated with revenues should be a topic of discussion. And I would think that it should be an additional topic of, uh, discussion or relevance, um, given the fact that, uh, we ought to be considering ourselves some sort of opportunity corridor if in some point in the future the purple line, um, fixes a pothole or finishes a project.
Another suggestion that has come up in our budget was the commercial, a separate commercial property tax.
But that's not it.
I'm talking if that's what personal property.
Is that what you mean by personal?
Yeah, that's, in Maryland, technically in Maryland, like my understanding is that's what you call the, the, uh, the property taxes associated with, or the taxes associated with business revenue.
Yeah, so there, there are, maybe I got confused. There are two, there's commercial property taxes
Right.
as a category. And right now, commercial property tax is the same. And there is a thing called, poorly named, personal property tax, which is about the stuff in the business. But is not associated with revenue. It's associated with, at least the version we had, was associated with inventory.
Inventory.
So you're, you must be talking about a third thing. So this is probably.
Perhaps, uh, it is different in, uh, the disbursements with regard to other counties or something. But my understanding of the whole thing was that if you're doing your, uh, tax schedule and you're talking about your property, then at some point you are also putting on that schedule the amount of revenue that you actually generated. So it, it, it does redound to being, um, some degree of commercial property tax. If I'm wrong about that, I, I'm sure that, uh, Director Chung can, um, can tell me.
Yeah, that sounds like a good other question to ask.
Yeah, it's, yeah, so, um, and again, we can, we can follow up with our, with IRA as well. So, um, my understanding is the personal property tax for businesses, there was a, a piece based on the, the revenues and of course the, the, you know, any expenses. But the inventory tax was a separate thing and it was more around taxing on the amount of inventory that you have within your business. So if you have a business that has like the S and A bead shop or you have a number of like jewelry stores that are in, um, Ward Six or other businesses that typically have stock, they would then be taxed on that stock. Which is, yes, and so we got rid of the inventory tax. The stock tax or the inventory tax. Because one, we were the only ones that had it. It actually created a barrier to businesses wanting to come here because we were the only ones that had it. We had one business that actually moved across the line. That was into Como Park and they moved across the line because they didn't have to deal with that. And two, it was a, a bit of a regressive kind of approach because you had a number of small businesses that had a lot of inventory, um, that were paying a lot more money.
Drinks, like you gotta have a lot of stuff on hand versus, uh, LIFO, FIFO stuff.
Right, so, but, but we can have that as a topic and people can be, um, people can, we can have a presentation. I know that's not the point of tonight's meeting, um, to educate folks on what those different tax structures are.
So the personal property tax, which is different than the inventory tax, is gonna be at least considered, is that what we're saying?
So the personal property tax is the business tax and the inventory tax is sometimes a, a, a part of that. So, um, I think when you're talking about the commercial taxes, all of that for the most part is basically business tax.
So I can, I can revise this to get the language straight on this last bullet about commercial property taxes. Because the intent was never to lift the personal property inventory tax and not do anything else. But it did make no sense during COVID to talk about adding taxes of any sort to anybody, particularly to business. So, um, what I'm wondering is whether, uh, we should make sure that we, we focus this on things we want to work on and not focus this on things we want to be educated on. So maybe we are talking about two work sessions to start with that focus on, um, just what is the baseline for, particularly for new council members? What are we doing now on vehicle replacement and road maintenance policies and equipment reserve? I know that we already heard this once. But if it would be useful, maybe we would have a session just to focus on that. And then another session specifically to focus on these revenues, again, for the purpose of education, not necessarily for the purpose of changing policy. And so let's keep this focused, I would suggest, let's keep this focused on the things we want to do some deeper dive on the, and now, on the, um, policy itself because we think there might be something we'd want to adjust. That makes sense?
Excuse me, I'm sorry, I've had my light on for a long time and I wanted, I'm sorry, no, I'm sorry, I was, I was waiting and I, no, now we've jumped on to sort of the bigger picture. But I wanted to just add, I would very, very much like to see that second resolved include intergovernmental, um, transfers as well. I see that as a very critical, I know that you just did some awesome work on that as a previous council. But in my mind, this is a very important moment to revisit that and keep pressing on that, especially in light of the proposed 10 cent tax increase at the county level and some of the free services that are currently, have been recently changed. And I'm not sure that we're getting all the benefits that we could be getting. So that may be a whole set of sessions by itself. But in terms of education, it's very, very essential in my mind and it's a potentially large source of funding.
The conversation so far is making me very nervous.
Yeah.
Because we, the timeline right now, uh, is eight months. And I know we're talking about setting priorities and such, but we're, we're adding a lot to the list. And by my count, we've got 12 items that city staff are supposed to review in eight months. That's not possible.
Yeah. That's why I was trying to break some of it out as let's, let's learn more about it before we commit to do it, getting us and the city staff into a very deep conversation. Um, I, I wrote down intergovernmental transfers. Personally, I think it's premature to visit it.
I, I agree. I think that.
At least if you're talking about the county.
If, we've just gotten a small one with the county. Um, and I think that, um, however, when we are talking about MML priorities or legislative priorities and if one of our goals is to increase, um, opportunities for municipalities to have alternative, um, revenues. Um, it could be through state tax, um, bills that may come through to make sure that we can get, um, be able to leverage, uh, separate revenues. Um, but I, I, I question whether or not now is the time to, um, push again on, um, on the, uh, tax duplication matter.
I, I want to associate with Kara's suggestion because I do think we learn in terms of at least, uh, my conversations in my ward and, and then many of the messages that we heard by comments from the public that there's a still, there's a lot of confusion about why we're paying this and not that. And intergovernmental transfers, if nothing else, to educate ourselves about what we can or cannot do. But I, I do think that it is, uh, I mean, I asked, one of the questions that I asked, uh, uh, in the budget process was what are the service, programs and services that we're, that are not, we're not, not getting any duplicate, uh, reimbursements for that we could, uh, or that, that, that the county offers? And the answer was everything. So I, I think we need to go deeper dive and see whether there are maybe some services that, that, um, that this county provides that, uh, um, duplicate what we're doing. Um, I think there's a lot of interest in, in, by the public in that.
But that's a different point. Um, what we're talking about are revenues and what you're talking about are.
Revenue replacements.
Right, it's like basically transfer of services. And I, I would argue, um, while I think that that is something that is, um, a, a, a point to consider, um, the question at hand are what are the reserve policies we want to look at, the fiscal, um, updates we want to have, as well as some actual revenue sources that we can gather? I, I think that, um, when you start going down the path of exchanging revenues with, uh, exchanging expenditure service categories with the county, that's a whole different rabbit hole that also requires lots and lots of community engagement to ensure that we know which services residents in the community would prefer. And, and I, I hear that we're hearing from a very vocal group, but there's some folks, if we were to make a decision to say, hey, let's move our public works to the county, because that's what some people are saying, and I'm just trying to make sure I understand what it is that.
Can I be clear that I don't associate myself right now with that, with this dialogue? That is not at all what I am talking about. I am talking about generation of, gathering of revenue from the county for things that we are doing. I mean, you could, yeah, I'm not talking about.
Duplication point where we get reimbursed for certain services.
Yes, I was, I, I was, I was troubled by the fact that if I understood correctly the calculation of the, the, um, tax, or whatever, the revenues that we were getting from the county, for example, was a fixed value. Is that incorrect? Is it, uh, proportionate or a percentage or something?
It's fixed for, um, I'm no expert here, but it's fixed for some expenses. For others, I believe it changes on some regular, um, uh, uh, schedule, but it's not annually.
Yeah, and, and I under, I fully get that we're, this list is getting too big and I, I appreciate that. I just, I just want to throw, if we're gonna have this conversation, to me, that is one of the biggest things that gave me, uh, lost sleep at night, like wow, with rising inflation, well, how could we possibly be at a fixed value for anything from the county um, as things are just going through the roof? So that made me really concerned that we just, it's, it's already time to renew that conversation. But I get, I get that this list is too big and somehow we got to pare it down.
And I, I do want us to focus on what we, and, and not staff, not staff. What are we hoping to tackle, right? So again, you know, there's, there's a lot of stuff that's going here and there's this idea that staff is gonna be doing all this stuff. We have to do this stuff too. So keeping in mind on how we may be able to focus and narrow the list around the key issues and key topics that we want to try to tackle because a num, each one of these could have five or six meetings. And it's already 11 o'clock and I thought it was gonna be an early night. So, um, so I think that that's also something important to keep in mind. Councilmember Siemens?
Thank you. I'd just, uh, say that, um, this whole thing about, uh, revenues and increasing revenues, I think is an important topic. I think that is, uh, not a low-hanging fruit though. It's, uh, something we're gonna have to spend great amount of time on, you know, discussing economic development. And I would, as far as the, uh, the money that we get from the inner, uh, inner county or whatever they call that thing, the, the money that we get from the county, that is something that, that city councils, past city councils have worked on long and hard to get us to where we are now. There's a lot of, uh, information in, um, past council minutes. There's a lot of information that, uh, that there's documentation on. There's a lot of people in the city who have worked on that to try to get us to where we are.
There's a lot of people in the city who have worked on that to try to get us to where we are. Uh and I would say that that's probably a good place for someone who doesn't understand the process right now, that they go and and talk with maybe past mayors or past council members and get some of the information on uh what's happened. And and basically, the way it works is uh we're at the mercy of the county to give us what they wanna give us. And we mark our argument for what we think we deserve and they uh give us what they wanna give us. Most recently, the county has been more generous than they had been for a long time. Uh we had some initiatives with MML to try to, you know, put some uh get some uh additional fairness, whether it be through legislative matters or or just working with the county. A lot of work has been done on this. We've gotten uh in a better position than we were, but I think it's not um, it's not something that's gonna take a short amount of time to discuss and it's not something that's gonna end up with a whole lot more revenue. Uh there are other things, I don't, I don't see any big opportunities for revenue short of economic development. And uh I think for the purposes of going, you know, the next couple of months, I think we uh need to look at the at the expenses.
Yep. And for folks who are um are looking for information regarding tax duplication, if you type into the search bar of the city website, tax municipal tax duplication, there's tons of information because there was lots of app lobbying that happened particularly in FY twenty twenty two. Um lots of um open layer, letters from the mayors of Gethysburg, Rockville, Tacoma Park, um articles from um different uh Bethesda magazine, that there's just a really long FY twenty nineteen, all the entire history of tax duplication um is available on our website.
I was, if I might just follow up on on uh Councilmember Siemens. I agree, it, there isn't a lot of low hanging fruit. And um there, the the options are, I mean, we're we're looking at revenue. Um we're also looking at ways to save. So I think that that uh the, looking at county services in terms of what can they do that that, what could we not do? Is a way of saving, but uh so our expenditure side is is as um is probably more uh reducing our expenditures is is a is 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 has more low hanging fruit than getting new revenue. But I I certainly su- support going and and doing, do our do, doing due diligence with with a few of these items. So just enough said that we we have to uh, yeah, I've said it.
And I'll go on record as saying that I do not support turning services over to the county and diminishing the uh character of Tacoma Park. Thank you.
Okay. Uh Councilmember Small is is.
Is associating himself with who?
Is associating himself with Councilmember Siemens.
Thank you.
Okay, uh so sounds like the next item uh that I wanna move on to, and I think this is the last item because Councilmember Siemens withdrew his amendment. Um Councilmember Gibson um has a resolved clause regarding the timeline of community engagement in the budget process.
Council's engagement. You want me to read it?
Uh no, 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 no need to read this, if you have a um any background or anything that would be helpful for folks.
Um I mean, the background is that we we, the the process that we went through on this budget needs to change. And so we need to look at the information and see how we can better prepare ourselves for the next year's budget. And we do that by getting uh quarterly reviews that discuss fiscal budgetary program data, which we didn't have this this last time, um to and in a, as a way of getting ahead of establishing budget parameters. I'm not sure exactly what that would mean, but we can, it it may be priorities, it may mean um some some at at ear- at first quarter and then uh obviously at the end of the second quarter, when we have uh considerably more information to be able to tell the city manager, advise the city manager, certain parameters for the budget that we would like to see him produce.
Such as?
I think if you give an example, people will understand a little more.
Such as, such as. Such as, I uh well, we, we asked for last, we'd asked from uh council or city manager Fox for two other scenarios for for the budget. We didn't get those. One of those scenarios would be, could potentially be um constant yield plus plus uh inflation or CPI. We could say we, in other words, to get ahead of the game, get ahead of 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 making recommendations to the city manager about what's, what kinds of maybe multiple scenarios, what uh again, the parameters of a budget. This is a new, I'm uh struggling here because I haven't been been through this, but for one process, which I felt was very, very much of stifling in terms of not giving me any any um us many choices. The the biggest deficit was not having um, not having more than one scenario for for a budget with any depth and not having any program information, program data, performance information, either effectiveness or efficiency. So part of, if and we we, if 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 we're involved early in looking at our budget process, see the needs, then that would help us, inform us in terms of how we can guide the city manager, in terms of developing a budget or budgets that that would meet our needs.
So so Councilmember Gibson, one of the questions I have is how um does the quarterly review? Is there a way for that concept to be captured under the quarterly fiscal reports? I think.
They're they're very much the same, except it's going further. In other words, it's not, it's not being passively receiving, but we're gonna use that along with, along with uh program information to 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 push ourselves to be looking ahead about, again, budget parameters. So it's using the information of those quarterly meetings, quarterly data, and also the first quarterly report will be about the same time we'll have the previous fiscal year's uh eh financial report. With that information, we may be able to 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 uh be be look ahead and 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 set some guidelines for for our budget uh targets.
Yeah, I I think um it might be helpful um for there to be a uh and and I could talk to Mr. Uvanks, I think that there may be a little confusion around how the entire budget process aligns uh linearly, right? Cause we have aspects of budget formulation where you're putting together the budget, which is what we've just gone through. Then you're gonna have folks that are gonna start executing the budget. At the same time, we will later in the year, like early fall, receive an actuary report, which you all receive in November, that gave us the the readout, the final accounting readout, the big report, the ACFR, about the actuals, right? So that, those ti- and those actuals also included things like certain measures, right? So all of those things together, you will have over the course of the year. So so what I'm trying to get an understanding of is if we're asking for a quarterly report on the execution of the twenty twenty four budget and we're going to get the ACFR, which tells you what happened with the actuals, then, and you have the budget, which my understanding is that there are some performance types of data that will be in there. So so I'm just trying to make sure I understand from a staff perspective, what more a quarter are we looking? Or would it be helpful for us to map this out so people can see how you're actually getting this information?
Yeah, it probably would be hap- but the what's what's missing, what at least I missed was using that data to look forward in terms of a a budget. So I, the key thing is the goal, identifying preliminary budget parameters that we did not do. We 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 got information, I I, we, you know, try, understood it or tried to understand it, but we did not use it to to outline what might this mean down the road in terms of of our budget parameters? Do we need to be watching expenses differently? Do we need to be looking at certain programs differently? But it 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 it, we don't wait, we can't wait until March to start asking the city manager for a budget. We have to start much earlier, so.
And so there's deliberations here for April one?
That would be when we, like, that's would be when we, that's, we start at April twelfth or fourteenth. I'd like to at least start the the deliberation part uh two weeks earlier. But that's, that's just the uh, that's the end of the process, was, that's the deliberation process that we, that was so fraught this particular time. I just thought we would at least give ourselves two more weeks.
All right. Councilmember, okay, so it's uh Councilmember Dabala, you're up next and then Small, you're after her. You're not, your light's not right?
I'm not, no, that's just leftover.
Okay, turn that light off. Councilmember Small.
Um I the first thing that I would say is that um I would really encourage everyone to um go to the state code and read the state code concerning municipalities and potentially even go um and Google Maryland home rule statute and how it came to be. Um there are some uh requirements by law um for all of the municipalities um to provide regular um opportunities in the budget process uh for advice and consent from the residents. I would also say that if the charter says that the city manager is supposed to present a budget, then the staff is required to present that budget. And the reason why that is, is because um they are the people who are the professionals and work here. I hear a lot of what Councilmember Gibson says as well heard. But rather than um couching it in the terms that he is, I would just caution everyone um that normal would be a good idea for people to consider here because it's important for people to remember, particularly new people, that none of the official normalized timelines about the presentation of uh the constant yield rate and then the appropriate notices of hearings and things like that um were observed this year in a truncated process associated with previous management issues. And I think it's really, 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 really important um for people to recognize that. Um because if we are going to have a staff that we pay um a lot of money to, then we should expect that they have the ability to come up with a reasonable budget within the parameters of um good governance. The thing that I want to say about the possibilities of different um budgets being required as a part of the process is um I would think that it would be possible um to suggest or require internally that the staff consider such things. But the public disclosure of a required hard cut budget at the same time as you are trying to do what is the actual work of the town or the council would effectively mean that the real budget that the staff really thinks is going to to be important isn't really considered. And so um I would just like to say that um there's a lot of information already available about how these things are routinized and normalized that don't require excessive changes to our demands of staff or the abilities of the staff to plan effectively. And so um I don't know if that means like sort of separates some of the things that Randy has proposed into the first one um of uh accountability and some financial accountability things. But with regard to the actual manifestation of the way the budget is conceived and presented um and haggled over, there are actually real reasons why the the state has decided to make these options available to people. And I would just encourage people to um consider some of these. And I mean to talk for a long time, but I'm trying to be delicate. Thank you.
Jason, if I, can I follow up? Because I I def- I mean, you you know so much more about the budget process than I do. And and I think that your reference to to normalize or routinize thing, yeah, what we, what what I went through, what we all went through is not, cannot be normal.
It's messed, it was officially messed up and he did a wonderful job, all things considered.
Yeah, I'm.
But I would say.
So how do we, so what normal is, this seems to me, what I was proposing is not, should not be seen as some kind of extreme.
Oh, no, 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 I'm just talking, I think I'm more talking language and orientation toward the way, if we were to pass a resolution such as this, the way I would be more comfortable with it written in order to it to uh vote yes on it.
How would you, how would you write it? Because I I'm open to that, I I'm, I just want to find something that's a, that that's a it it gives it more meaningful.
Are we gonna talk, uh Mayor, this is coming up again, right?
Yeah, this is coming up again, this is a work session and you all can work offline.
Let me send you some proposed stuff, yeah, that's what I would say.
To clean up your language and then that way um we can um offline come together with a a a more cleaned up version. Councilmember Dabala, um do you have any thoughts regarding next steps that will help you?
So then this, then my question earlier about what do you mean by program data seemed, seemed a little ahead of where we are. Because first there, I would like to have clarity about how the staff sees incorporating any any program information or program goals into the next year's budget before we can talk about analyzing it and projecting it and all of that stuff, I'd like to start with.
No, it's a key, it's a key missing element.
Right, so so not to, not to bring that up right now for discussion, but to park that as, first, we need to do that. And I know that there's some thoughts about that already. So just as you and Jason are, uh Jason are working on that, just noting that. So in conclusion?
I hope so.
I just, the one last thing I wanted to say about what you just said is that, in my opinion, there are some things that um would be vested in this person.
Yes.
Who is completely capable of talking about the verticality or the flow charts associated with how the office is organized. And that um I would hope that in this near term, that even if we're not gonna change any of these designations, that such a resolution would empower the acting deputy city manager to examine the organizational structure and current workflows to his liking. That's what I would think. That's all.
Okay, I was talking about something slightly different, um all, plenty of other things besides this. So to, what I'm hearing is that people wanna go ahead with my revising this based on the discussion for us to consider uh next week. the discussion for us to consider next week, that the first bullet, the first resolved has a little bit, a little bit of revision, but it's not the big, the second and third resolves need a little bit of, need a lot of work. And that I will anticipate that Councilmembers Gibson and Small will work on this potential addition and we can reconvene on this next week. And again, this is not the universe of everything we need to do on the budget as far as I'm concerned. This is to focus the council on what are the things we want to do in the short run now that we've come through the budget process once and we have seen some things that we want to look at before the next one. And, and again, are, are the couple of things that I've proposed, are they the ones that we want to pursue? Sounds like people think so. But there's been all this other discussion about other directions to go in. So think about that while, when you review this the next time. Is that it?
That's it.
Thank you.
All right. All right, I'm moved that we adjourned.
Second.
Excellent. Everyone have a good night.
Ah, wait a minute.
Ah.